Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the September 5th, 2023 City Council Meeting. If you could all rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We can get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strohman.
Here.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Engel.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hagan.
Here.
Mayor Bellinger.
Here. All right, first up is the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or member of the public for special consideration. Is there anything here at the council level we need to pull for consideration?
I'd like to pull number three just for a quick question.
Okay, is there anybody out in the audience or online that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar for further communication or consideration?
Mr. Mayor, can I pull number one?
Yes.
I just wanted to make a note on item number three.
Okay.
In the staff report, under the recommendation, it has the amount for the well, and then it says with a 15% contingency for construction and/or material costs for a total, and then the sentence was not completed, it would be a total not to exceed amount of $2,918,270. And so if you were to move forward with item number three, we would request that you would approve it as amended, and we will update that language to read that, which is a total of the amount for the well bid plus that 15% contingency.
Mr. Mayor, pulling two of the three items. Let's go ahead and start off with item number three. Do you have some questions there?
I just had one quick question. This is all currently covered financially by the current water rates? Or I just want to understand how it's being financed a little bit more.
Sure. So this project actually dates back to, I believe, 2015. It's been a work in progress and in process. We originally, this well was taken, removed off the water system because of the high nitrates. We had to go through the process of a rate study to adequately collect the amount that would be needed to fund that loan. We do have a loan with the state. It's a state loan with a low interest rate, 30-year loan, as indicated in the staff report, that is covered currently by the rates. However, when the bids did go out for this project, they came in much higher than originally pooled for the loan. I did work with our finance consultant to confirm that instead of going back to the state and asking for an increase to that loan amount, that we do have enough funding in that existing Water Enterprise account to cover the additional costs.
So is it fair to say it's not going to affect the citizens' water rate then?
No, the water rates are in place, and because we'll be pooling out of the existing balance of the Water Enterprise Fund, we do not need to go back to the water rates to increase them for this specific project.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So staff, can you please explain to the constituents about why we are drilling this new well when we're also planning on the SSJID surface water project?
Sure. So the wells are part of our groundwater. Currently, the city's primary source of water is groundwater, and the state has specific regulations addressing number of wells and capacity. So the example that would be used is, and this is an example, but it's basically, in the event that the city has a citywide fire, the city has to be able to provide enough water to address that fire, but also continue to be able to provide that service to all of the residents. And so currently, we have enough wells to generate enough water for the residents of the town, but in the event that there is a huge crisis or emergency, i.e. a fire of some sort, we do not have that backup emergency capacity to be able to address that. And so we are required by the state of California to do this. That's why we moved forward with the state of California loan and went through those processes, and they worked with us on taking those steps necessary to be able to process that loan, get the application completed, and eventually pull that loan. But it just so happened that in that time period and with the current state of the economy, the bids came in much higher. And so instead of trying to increase that loan, we're pooling from the Water Enterprise Fund to pay that difference. And in the event that we, as the city, would need to exceed that 15% contingency, it would come back before the council for additional approval.
So what you're saying is that this is required by the state of California, and a hookup to SSJID for the surface water would not be sufficient to be in lieu of well number one?
Well, we're not that far. So this is something that needs to be taken care of now, and we already have pulled the loan. We're making payments on that loan, so we need to move forward with the project. However, in the event if we, it is possible that if we have done the surface water project and had that proven secondary source, that maybe we would not need that well. I'm not absolutely sure on that, but currently, we do not have a connection to the surface water. So we have to fulfill our groundwater needs and requirements.
When is well one expected to be complete?
I don't recall specifically, but we're a little bit behind because it took us a few weeks to gather the right information to make sure that we wouldn't need to go to the state and ask for additional loans. And so we are trying to expedite and move this project as soon as possible. We did only receive that one bid, as indicated in the staff report, and they are eager to start as soon as possible. And so I can definitely provide an update at the next meeting on the timeline, if you like, or send out an email, but they are very eager to start.
In regards to the surface water, do we have an update on that? How that may pertain to this, since we're having the conversation?
Not at this point of time. We did have the 30% design that was submitted to SSJID, and they did provide pretty basic comments. As indicated in the last quarterly report, we needed to move forward with an appraisal on that small piece of land where we would essentially be keeping that equipment, and that was per SSJID's requirement so that they could separate their facility from our facility for that type of, that specific project. We will be meeting with the city of Ripon in the next few weeks. They have expressed interest in possibly participating in the surface water project and becoming a permanent party that would share in costs and infrastructure. And so as that moves forward, whether or not they move forward and agree to doing that or not, that will be updated with the council. But currently, they're in the very early stages of showing some interest in wanting to be a part of the group.
When would you anticipate an update for?
I could give you one at the next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Can I say something about the well?
Yes, and then I meant to refer to Jake Cook, crew leader, standing in for Public Works Superintendent Justin Collins.
So the difference between the well and surface water is the well, we have more control of, so we can meet high demand when we want it, and we cannot use it when we don't want to use it. With surface water, there's a minimum you have to take at all times, and the time span between high flow and low flow is not timely enough to meet the high demands. So with a well, you know, it's on a VFD, and as demand calls for it, it will ramp up and provide the water that we need at that time. So, yeah, the well is needed for, in that case. If we had a water main break and there's 1,500 gallons coming out of the road, the well would pick it up, whereas SSJID, you would have to call into SSJID. They would have to allocate that water and send it down the line to keep up the flow. So the well suits us better.
Thank you. Thank you, Jake.
Any other questions on item three? All right, going back to item number one. Councilman Strohman, you have a question?
Yeah, I would just like to request a clarification on the minutes. Let's see, in, let's see. One, two, three, four, five. On the eighth paragraph down that starts, Councilman Strohman acknowledged the concern. I mentioned at the last meeting that Harmony contacted the five, all five council members individually. And I would like that note added within the minutes. That in that, in that meeting with Harmony, he stated specifically that I responded back to him. So really, just adding the clarification that Harmony contacted us individually. That's my only comment.
Any other comments on item number one?
Sure. I would just like to state, to have that. Thank you. The minutes were dramatically improved over the last time, so thank you very much. I think you did a great job.
All right, with that, and with the requested amendments and updates, I would entertain a motion to clear the consent calendar.
Please, as amended for item number one.
As amended with number one, yep.
And number one for minutes.
I'd make a motion on that to approve it with the amended change.
Motion, do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's 5-0. Moving on to staff communications, number four.
Before you, we have the treasurer's report for the month of July. And if there's no questions on that specific item, we can go one by one on the department heads. First, I'd like to formally introduce you to our financial consultant, Andy Heath. He's been with the city picking up on moving forward with the budget, and so he'll be doing that presentation tonight regarding our budget. Jalen, do you have any updates you'd like to provide?
Just a few updates. Continue to meet with organizations and businesses throughout the city just to, you know, get a better understanding of the goals and objectives of our community. We actually are seeing a lot of development projects come in. We're evaluating those, and we'll work those through the process as appropriate, of course. And we do have the housing element survey out. We're starting to receive surveys. It's available online and is also in the utility bills. So we're starting to receive the physical copies back from the utility bills, but we encourage participation in the housing element process. And that's all the updates I have.
Thank you.
Jake, do you have any updates for Public Works?
Yeah. Caltrans was supposed to start today on 1/20, but I guess they had a hiccup, and they're supposed to start Monday, the 11th. That's the only thing I got.
Thank you.
Sergeant Zambrano, do you have anything from the police department?
Nothing new from the police department.
Can I go back to Public Works, please?
Yes, please.
Do we have an update for the slurry seal that would be going on in Sanchez area?
I do not, but I can find out.
Please, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
We'll find out and let you know. Okay, and then I have a few updates as well. First update is that Chief Flores will be out for the month of September, potentially returning in October. So for the council meetings, we'll be seeing Sergeant Zambrano and/or Sergeant Hargraves at these meetings in lieu of his attendance. Also, as you could tell, Public Works Superintendent Collins was unable to make it, and so we have Jake here available for Public Works questions. Oakdale Animal Shelter Subcommittee, this was an item I brought to council's attention. Still in the process of kind of being established. However, the city of Oakdale and the city of Riverbank have appointed council members to the subcommittee. It's not required to be done that way, but I just wanted to put that out there for you if this council's interested in potentially appointing a council member. It's, the last few months, it's been the third Thursday of the month. However, the next meeting was changed to a different day, so I don't think they've solidified a date and time. I will be adding this item to the meeting of the 18th for potential appointment, and so I just wanted to put that out there in case anybody had any interest. This group is specifically meeting monthly, on a monthly basis regarding the animal shelter that is currently owned and operated by the city of Oakdale, who also provides services to the city of Riverbank and then us as the city. So I just wanted to put that out there. I also have some agenda item requests. The first agenda item request I have is from Ryland and Jamie Butler. This is regarding road closure setup times on Main Street for events. Specifically, they are looking to bring, to have, the council agendized this item to discuss using different parts of the park, maybe move events towards the Second and Third Street area for events, limiting how many hours the street could be closed prior to events, and then potentially putting some type of policy in effect that would maybe not have more than one event, have a road closure on the weekend, or potentially offer other dates, something like, something to that attention because it's affecting the businesses downtowns that they have. And so this item with council consensus could be placed on the next meeting agenda, which would be September 18th for discussion.
I would support that.
I would too, but also, weren't we changing that last time? Didn't we talk about that a while ago, about?
They have come to the council before. Well, this should be something that would be discussed on the agenda. But what I can say is, is the city did take some initial steps regarding trying to more-
Narrow the timeline, but just not enough, or?
Yeah, and it's basically trying to put some type of control or regulation so that it's not excessive to the point where it's every Saturday or multiple Saturdays in a month because that's a busy day for shopping.
Gotcha.
Or finding additional ways to hold events that would potentially not impact the businesses.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, if it's-
Consensus?
Yes.
We have a consensus.
Okay. Okay, the next agenda item request we have from Kristi and Doug Pruden. They were actually present at the last meeting and discussed the issues that they're having over on Deborah Circle. They were requesting speed bumps or stop signs on Deborah Circle. They have also been to the council prior regarding this specific issue and would like to have the council discuss it with your guys' permission. I could put this on the agenda for the September 18th meeting.
Think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I would second that on that.
Meals? Looks like we have consensus then.
Does everybody agree? Good, okay.
You got three, yeah.
Okay, so I will reach out to both applicants and let them know that these items will be on the next meeting for September 18th for discussion. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, moving on. Next is matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on an item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda, and except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing an item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision made by the mayor. And with that, we'll open up to the public. Anybody who would like to take the podium?
Evening. Had to write this down because I get so nervous here. First, I want to apologize to you, Mr. Engel, for singling you out last meeting. I apologize for that. In my anger, my statement should not have been directed to you specifically. Though I will not apologize for stating the rift in this council needs to stop, you are to be governing all of Escalon. There are more important agenda items that need to be addressed now, items that have been held over with no action from previous councils. I have been called out for speaking out twice in social media, on a local page and a private page. I've been called names by a former council member. I've been cited of wrongdoing through gossip. The accusations are baseless, especially when I'm not given an opportunity to clarify any rumors or gossip in my defense. This is what our town is dealing with, bullies and to be bullied into supporting our local government the way they feel it should be without input from others. This nation is divided enough, and it is a sad day to see what is happening in our town and our own community. This is not one person's town, it is yours. It is the people here tonight, and it is mine. I wish you luck in your endeavors and personal agendas. But lastly, I hope you become united and become a council that deserve, that our city deserves. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lois Tilbury, and I'd like to just share a few thoughts about Ann Shaddix, who would like very much to serve one more term as Escalon's representative on the County Commission on Aging.
Do you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you hold off on that until we get to that on the item?
Oh, absolutely.
It's on the agenda, and you'll have plenty of time to have that conversation, but that way it'll be on topic at that point in time for everybody at the same time. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jayla. I also wrote notes because I don't like talking in front of people. I came tonight to voice my frustrations. I believe that each of you on this council took this position because you wanted to better our community. That being said, I think it's unacceptable that for two years, our police officers have gone without a contract. It is unacceptable, there's no reason for it. Two years and two different councils. I know that this was inherited to you guys, but you haven't completed the job. They're still working without a contract. Our police officers are some of the lowest paid in the area. That's been proven to you guys over and over again, and they're still working without a contract. I know most of you are at Park Feet, and I sat back and watched their interactions with the community, and it was amazing. They knew the people, they talked to the people, the kids ran up and hugged them. Very few communities around this area has that with their police officers. We have officers who are leaving Escalon, who are not working for us, not because they want to, they still want to work here, but they can't afford to work here. How sad is that? They can't afford to raise their families on what they're getting. To me, it's a slap in the face that we've waited two years to address this issue. And I know that you're going to say things happen behind closed doors and all that, and I get that, but at the same time, as somebody who's a constituent who voted for some of you, I feel that it's disrespectful that we're still waiting, two years after the fact, for these men and women who protect us, when we need help, they come no matter what, to not have a fair wage and not have a fair contract. That's your job on this council. And I don't think that the citizens are being treated fairly in this, and I definitely do not believe that the police officers are being treated fairly. So I ask you to give them a fair and decent contract. Thank you.
Anybody else here in the room? Before we close that out, is there anybody online on the go-to meeting that has a topic they'd like to bring up and address to the council? All right, with that, we will go ahead and close matters presented from the audience and move on to administrative matters. Number five, conduct interviews if council agrees to make appointments to the expired seat on the San Joaquin County Commission of Aging Escalon's representative.
Thank you, Mayor. At the August 7th meeting, staff had shared with the council that Escalon's representative on the San Joaquin County Commission of Aging term would be expiring August 18th. Staff was directed by council to announce the position through the city website, city Facebook page, newspaper, and posting at city hall to give the public the opportunity to apply for this position. We did run the announcement and posting up by August 9th at 5:00 p.m., and the deadline was through August 25th at 5:00 p.m. And we also followed council direction in scheduling the interviews for this meeting come tonight. We did receive two applications. The applicant's applications were included in the staff report, Elsa Sandoval, and then our current representative, Ann Shaddix.
Thank you.
Include the fact sheet as well as part of the agenda to refresh everybody on the position and how it's established.
Appreciate that. Guess we should start off with the candidates coming up and tell us a little bit about themselves and why they want the position. Who should we start with? Let's start with Elsa Sandoval.
I'm Elsa Sandoval, out on Sanchez Way.
Can you just give us a little background on why you would like to have this position and your qualifications and that sort of thing?
Well, if you want to start with education-wise, I hold a Bachelor of Science in Human Services, specifically addressing social services. So people think of social work, psychology, as well as a public administration degree. I also have 30 years of experience in the social services arena, which includes specifically trained to deal with elderly services. I have run the whole gambit in 30 years from focusing on children, families, as well as seniors. Don't know where you want me to start in 30 years of experience. I currently sit on a couple of committees. Obviously, one is currently local here, volunteer with Escalon Strong. The other is of a position with Congressman Harder's Community Advisory Committee as well. So 15 years on the Boy Scouts as well, dealing with families. And if you want to go back into my social services without taking 30 years into that, obviously, I have set a variety of councils associated with aging in place, seniors and disabilities committees. Most of it, yes, through Stanislaus County. They have a better-developed program where they bring in social services people to specifically address issues in rural communities, bringing, bridging county services with the seniors in disenfranchised communities, simply meaning they don't have access to the county seat. And it was my job to identify the needs and build the programs and bridge the programs. So, not sure what else. Again, 30 years, so pick away, ask what you wish.
Well, thank you for that, appreciate that. Guys want to open up some questions? If you guys have some questions here, Ms. Sandoval? None for you? Sure, Strohman? Yeah, please.
Hi, Elsa. Just in a brief statement, I know you stated your experience. What do you feel that you would bring to the Commission on Aging? Aside from your experience, goals, plans, thoughts?
I was actually part of what they call the sandwich generation, which means I was raising children at the same time that I was taking care of my elderly mother. And very much was aware of the lack of services or access to services, particularly since my mother did not drive, leaving it up to me to provide those needs, to meet those needs. Not every elderly person in Escalon has a child that can set aside their career goals to be able to balance all that. I would love to bring my background in social services along with my personal experience and my education to bridge those services between the county and our community. Obviously, boots on the ground with Escalon Strong has identified an incredible need to bridge those services. I would love to see the opportunity to build a safety net. I would love to see the opportunity to build a safety net. Yes, obviously, senior housing is and will always be a priority in Escalon, but until that need is met, there must be a safety net to keep our seniors to age in place and not be pushed out of their community. We're dealing with that right now out there, boots on the ground through the nonprofit, seniors who are from Escalon, lived here their whole lives, looking at literally having to pack up and leave Escalon because there's just nothing to access here. So until housing is resolved, that is beyond my scope at this time, then we must build that safety net and bridge those services. And I believe that my background in social services, and since I've done this already for other communities, would facilitate my ability to do that.
Any other questions up here, Ms. Sandoval? All right, thank you. Next up is Ann Shaddix, our current representative.
I'm Ann Shaddix, and I'm going to talk to you just a little bit about being a commissioner. First of all, a couple months ago, just to, from the county side of it, I completed everything that was necessary to be the commissioner. I studied the Brown Act, passed the test, presented the documents to 700 form. Also, I meet the criteria of being six years and older, so I met all the criteria for being a commissioner. What commissioners do essentially is try to improve the lives of seniors. We do that through services, we do that through programs that are available. So the commissioners are made aware of new programs and services, and as we learn about them, then it's our responsibility to pass that information on to the seniors or to be able to answer questions when they're asked. Now, for me, and I'll get into the pandemic in just a second, because during that time, we had limited exposure to people, it was mostly by phone, decided to put all the services available to Escalon seniors into a directory, which we did, a simplified document for people to have at home if they had a question about who to call on their PG&E bill, that phone number was there. If they needed to call City Hall, the phone number was there. So we spent considerable time figuring out a way to communicate with the seniors during that time. There's various, various programs, and one of the, the biggest one is the Walkability Program. And if you remember, when I was first commissioner, along with the staff here, we repaired the sidewalks on McHenry Boulevard. I'm constantly looking at safety here in Escalon, and I talked with Mayor Protem about my concern about Coley Avenue and by the American Legion and the sidewalk being unsafe, and the staff now is addressing that. When that's going to be repaired, I don't know, but our job is to look, where are things not safe reported and get action, so that our seniors can go out and enjoy being outside and be active. But during the pandemic, that was a real eye-opener, because we, when I, it was not just me, it's all the commissioners plus people here that called our people to make sure they were safe, to see if there was anything that was needed. I think the biggest surprise for me was, yes, they needed answers about how to pay their PG&E and so forth, but when I went to visit, the number of people, the number of our seniors that had no wills, no powers of attorney, only their names on the checking account, didn't even know where the documents were that they would need. So we immediately started working on that and bringing in, bringing in pro bono companies to help them get their papers together, to get situated. We will also have a seminar soon from a company that will be going through that more. We brought in someone who was an ex-judge, who talked to the seniors about the importance of wills and so forth. And that was a real surprise to us during the pandemic, that we found so many people that just hadn't paid attention to that. So we worked on that as well. The part that concerns me is the continuity of taking somebody out. When we work on something at the county, it's usually a very lengthy process, we're very involved, there's webinars involved, there's phone calls involved, there's contract reviews. And some of the things, just to give you an idea of what that I particularly am involved in, one of the things that we're looking at doing, and it's moving along pretty nicely, is starting a low-vision clinic. What we found is, the pandemic didn't cause more blindness or more loss of sight, but aging has. People are living longer, so eyes and ears and so forth, there has to be special programs out there to work with them. So we're working on a low-vision clinic for the county, which would mean if you had a problem, you would be examined by the doctor, sometimes you can't see to the left or to the right, or it's foggy straight ahead. That doctor would give orders for an occupational therapist, and then that therapist would work with you all along to both accept what was happening and adjust to whatever you had to adjust to, like using your TV, using your stove and so forth. That's a very, very big project, we put a lot of time into it, there's much more work to be done. Sidewalks will always be an issue for me, as well as senior housing. The other thing is, I'm very involved with the, and I told the council this some time ago, the Blind Center in Stockton, who provide a wonderful service, but there was some difficulty with it, there was a lot of protesting and picketing, and two, myself and one other commissioner were invited to come in, and we've worked on that, and now we're at a turning point with that, we've got the pickets and so forth stopped. Everybody's working together to rebuild the Blind Center and to make it so that anyone from the community can come. That came about because of a family here in Escalon who had a blind son and couldn't get through to the Blind Center for assistance, and that's how I got involved with it. That's going to take another year probably to work out all the fine details of it. But for a commissioner, in my opinion anyway, you have to have good leadership skills, communication skills, and you have to be a team builder. And I do believe that I've demonstrated all of those things. I do think that this is not the time to make a change. Sudden changes in an organization like this is not a good thing because of the work that the commissioners are doing together. So I appreciate being a commissioner for the last three years, it's been a real pleasure for me, and I hope to be able to continue. Thank you. Did you have any questions?
Questions up here at the council level? Anybody down here with any questions? All right, thank you. And before we bring it back to council, I know we have some folks in the audience that would like to speak on candidate's behalf at this point, so I would invite them to come up to the podium at this point, if you so choose to.
My name is Lois Wetter Tilbury, and I'd like to just share a few thoughts about Ann Shaddix, who would like very much to serve one more term as Escalon's representative on the County Commission on Aging. For starters, I'd like to thank Ann for her hard work in this position over the past three years. I've seen firsthand her passion and dedication to this job, and her sincere caring about the welfare of all seniors in Escalon. I met Ann four years ago as a new member on the Planning Committee during the formation of the Escalon Senior Fund Bunch. This group has a mission to get seniors out of their isolation and get them socializing, playing games, singing, exercising, eating, and celebrating together. The Fund Bunch is bigger and better than ever today, due largely to Ann's direction and sense of purpose. She is smart, she is dedicated, she is hardworking, she's active, and she's very compassionate. And she's become an important conduit for information between seniors and San Joaquin County, the city of Escalon, and the overall community. One that our seniors trust, they trust her and they appreciate her so much. I see constantly she's getting phone calls, she's getting people stopping her in stores and thanking her for what she does. She has earned their respect and maintained so many personal relationships with both residences, with both residents and businesses here in Escalon. I think it's important to note that most positions, whether they are paid or volunteer, and I think those of you who work very hard on this city council would agree, have a certain learning curve to them. It takes a while to develop that rapport and understanding of what is expected of you, what you can truly accomplish, and still stay true to your compass. Well, I strongly believe that Ann, over the past three years, has more than fulfilled her dream and responsibility as this commissioners, of this commission's representative, and I think she can prove herself the best person to carry it forward for another three years. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Was there anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Cindy Moreno, and I am lucky enough to work closely with Ann Shaddix also on the Escalon Senior Fund Bunch Committee. I am here tonight to say a few words about Ann with regards to her service on the San Joaquin County Commission on Aging. First of all, I also want to thank her for her service during the last three years as Escalon's representative on the Commission on Aging. I have also witnessed firsthand the positive impact she has had on the lives of our local senior citizens. She has put her heart and soul in this position and breathed new life into it. You can tell by what Ann talked about that she still has unfinished business to take care of. I hope the council will appoint her for another three years. Thank you.
My name is Heather Thomaser, and I'd also like to add my support for Ann for continuing on in this position. At this time, I think that the seniors in Escalon have an excellent representative. I think if you asked a senior who they would ask to get information, it would be Ann. She would be the first person that they would call. She just has an energy and insight as to what is needed for the seniors. And like has been mentioned with the Fund Bunch, they kept that organization going all through the pandemic. We couldn't meet in person, but Ann realized how important it was for people to have connections. And so there was a newsletter, it had games, it has puzzles, it had coloring pages, it has things to keep minds occupied, and I think that was an important part for seniors to get through that difficult time in their lives, in everybody's lives. So I really support her and her vision and everything that she's done in the past and the things that she has looking forward. Thank you.
Is there anybody else looking to speak, either in here, in the chambers, or in the go-to meeting?
Good evening, Sheri. I would like to say that if you choose to pick a different commissioner tonight, that those same activities wouldn't stop. You know, the Fund Bunch would continue her involvement with, you know, the Blind Anne's work, and I do thank her for what she's done through the COVID and the work she's done up to this point. But like all positions, yours included, there's time limit and there's continuity just flows to the next council or the next commissioner. Having worked in the community with a nonprofit with seniors, I can attest to the fact that there's quite a few seniors that are not part of the Fund Bunch, and I think the Fund Bunch is great, don't get me wrong, and I think it needs to stay there, I think it needs to flourish, and I hope it continues. But there are a number that aren't involved with that. There are a number that, you know, there are other needs out there. And personally, I have seen Elsa's, you know, activity and her, the way, the ability she has to assess different needs and her experience in that, I think that would be an asset to this community, to add that to what we already have. So I hope you would give that some consideration. And the fact that she's involved with Harder's office as well, there could be work in tandem within the county and our community. She's very community-minded, as is Ann, so I would hope that you would seriously consider her application. Thank you.
Anybody else? At this point, we can bring it back to council for discussion and thoughts on our candidates and how we might want to go about making a decision on that. I have a question for legal counsel, I'm not sure if this is appropriate, but I'm going to ask. Is there a way to have somebody be an alternate or something along those lines, or a transition plan? Can we set something up if we so chose to do something like that? Or is it, it's one candidate or the other, or can we have a combination or something? I know Ms. Shaddix has mentioned she wants one last term. Is there some way of alleviating some of the seniors' concerns of an abrupt transition at either here or in three years, if that's the way it goes? Is there anything like that that's allowed?
Yeah, I think as long as the secondary candidate met the qualifications, which it seems they both do, I don't think there's any issue with appointing someone to be the alternate, it would maybe be kind of an informal setup, but you could have, you know, those two people work together, name one as the primary, name one as the alternate, and just have them coordinate in the event that the primary couldn't attend the meeting, but that way, you know, we would kind of have a record, at least in the minutes of the meeting tonight, that that was done. Are you aware of anything in the program that disallows an alternate? Usually that's not something that, you know, is covered by the...
I'm not, the fact sheet doesn't address alternates, and it can always be presented to them in that fashion.
As an alternate or a transition period?
I doubt they would have an issue with that.
As we work through something, if that was something we wanted to do, I'm not sure if the council's thought of that, or just, it was an idea I thought of as a transition period, if that was something we wanted to do. Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts or concerns or anything like that that we have to discuss here? Why group? All right, at this point, we'll entertain nomination. Thank you for that.
Nomination.
I'd like to make a nomination, if I can, following what you just mentioned, so setting up that two-tier approach. I would like to nominate Elsa Sandoval. I've seen the things she's done in six months that are just amazing, and I think that you give her a chance, you're going to see some really amazing things for this town. So that's where I'm at on that.
So if I was here, looking for Elsa Sandoval to be primary?
Elsa to be primary and Ann to be secondary.
Okay. And as nominations, do we do go directly to vote, or do we have... And as nominations, do we do go directly to vote, or do we have discussion and then go to vote? How do we make sure?
All nominations, and then you'll close nominations and take a vote on each.
Okay. Are there any other nominations up here at the council level?
Mr. Mayor, I can appreciate Ms. Sandoval's experience. I mean, her resume, just in this cover letter alone, speaks volumes. And so, Elsa, I appreciate everything that you do for seniors, not just in Escalon, but But I think that this is not the appropriate time to just stop the work that Anne has been doing. Yes, Anne's term is up, however, I think for continuity, not just for these projects, but also for continuity for the Commission on Aging, we, as the body of Escalon, of the City Council of Escalon, owe that to the rest of the commissioners. I do like the approach that you mentioned, where we have the primary and the alternate. I think that Anne and Elsa are qualified. So, I would like to make a nomination for Anne to continue in one last term, so that she can get her projects done, with Elsa to be considered as the alternate.
And then, what we can do is vote on the first nomination first, and then, just for clarity, would ask that you each only vote once for the two options, so.
And we have a third nomination.
Is there a possibility for a third nomination?
Well, yes.
No alternate.
My...
To go no alternate?
It would be to go no alternate, and my nomination would be for Elsa Sandoval. And the reason behind it is, I get trying to appease everybody, but I think we see things strung along in government enough where sometimes we just need to pull off the Band-Aid and move forward. And not that I don't appreciate everything that Anne has done, because I do, but looking forward towards the future of our citizens, specifically our seniors, I believe that she would do a great job in guiding them into what Escalon is becoming and is going to become over the next several years.
Okay, we've got three nominations. Any other feedback? I think we are ready for a vote.
Okay. On the nomination for Elsa Sandoval, go ahead.
So it's Elsa Sandoval with Anne as a alternate, or is that appropriate?
We'll take that one first.
Okay, so that's the one, vote on the table is Elsa Sandoval with Anne as the alternate. So, all those in favor, excuse me by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Next option?
We need to put nays on the record.
Oh, I thought we were only voting once, sorry.
Oh, we're doing nays too?
We have two votes.
Oh, no, we can just do, oh, no, that's fine.
We have two votes for that.
Because everyone will vote once for...
Next option is for Ms. Chaddix to be the primary with Elsa Sandoval as the alternate. All those in favor?
Aye.
I think at this point, with the third vote, we know what that is. But we'll officially say the third option of Elsa Sandoval being the primary alone. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then in light of the tie, I'll bring it back to you all, would you prefer, I mean, you know, we're kind of stuck at this point, unless we can get someone to go one way or another?
You could probably sway me to go one way or the other.
So we can, we can, if you, yeah, I mean, if you want to just state on the record which way you'd prefer to go, then we can, we can move you into the majority category.
Yeah, of, by two options, I would choose to have Elsa as the commissioner and Anne as, what do we call it, I'm sorry?
Alternate.
Anne as the alternate.
Okay, so it looks like we got to 3-2 on the option to have Elsa serve as the primary with Anne as the alternate. Does that reflect everyone's understanding?
Yes.
Okay. I think we're good.
All right, moving on to item number six, informational presentation slash update regarding Escalon, Escalon's wastewater treatment plant upgrade project by Blackwater Consulting.
Thank you, Mayor. And we have Allison approaching the podium here for a presentation that we're going to go ahead and pull up. Just going to share this with the go-to as well. Okay, take it away.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for this opportunity to present information about the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project. My name is Allison Fruya. I'm with Blackwater Consulting Engineers. I've been the manager and the lead contact for the city on this project. My presentation tonight, next slide, will include some background information about the wastewater treatment facility, where it is, what it does, how it does it. Then I'll move into discussing historical issues that helped start the need for this upgrade project. I'll review the scope of the project itself, what's included, and then end with information on the status. To give you a little bit of background about the wastewater treatment facility, if you have gone to the site of where the animal shelter used to be and continued down that side road, hopefully you'd hit a closed gate, because the wastewater treatment plant should be a secure location. But if you were able to get past that gate, you would enter the property of the treatment plant. It's located on two very large parcels that are separated by the Union Pacific Railroad right of way. The parcels encompass a total area of over 80 acres. There are lots of ponds at the treatment facility, and the reason why there are lots of ponds is because it relies on these ponds to treat the wastewater and dispose of it. So this slide shows a unique characteristic about the treatment plant. It's essentially two plants in one. On one part of the plant treats flows from two industries, Escalon Premier Brands and Eckert Cold Storage, and it also takes storm water from a portion of the city's storm drain system. The ponds that are responsible for treating and disposing of the industrial storm sources are highlighted in blue. On the east side of the railroad line, kind of on the north, are the treatment ponds for the industrial storm water. And then, if you were to go on the other side of the railroad line, in the southern portion, are the percolation ponds for those wastewater sources. The ponds that were highlighted in green treat the domestic wastewater from the city. You've got treatment ponds, again, on the east side of the railroad, and then percolation ponds on the west. In 2014, the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board issued a cease and desist order to the treatment plant. That order cited a few violations of the permit. Those violations included receiving numerous odor complaints from off-site of the treatment plant. A permit requirement is that there be no objectionable odors beyond the facility property. There was also inadequate freeboard in the ponds, meaning that there was a lot of water collecting, in particular in the percolation ponds. There's a requirement to have at least two feet of distance between the high water level and the top of the berms, and that wasn't present at this time. There were rodent holes that caused leakage of the effluent from the percolation ponds into the Stanislas River. And then there was also vegetation observed in the ponds, which can lead to the breeding of mosquitoes and flies, as well as exacerbate the odorous conditions. So, there have been very significant improvements to the operation and maintenance procedures at the treatment plant, which have mitigated these issues and prevented them from recurring. But there was also recognition that those improvements in terms of operation maintenance could only take you so far, and long-term, there would need to be a larger-scale capital project to rehabilitate the treatment facility. There is also recognition that these improvements should last a certain period of time, and so consideration on what capacity requirements would be needed over that same period of time should be considered. And that led to the preparation of the preliminary wastewater treatment plant master plan. This master plan was prepared in 2019. It reviewed the cease and desist order and identified issues that led to those permit violations. It proposed solutions and included proposing six different alternatives. These alternatives were focused primarily on what the design capacity should be and looked at disposal capacity for the system. All of those alternatives had the same concept of combining the three different waste streams, the industrial, storm, and domestic, as well as looked at the same type of treatment technology for the secondary treatment process, excuse me. A workshop was held with the city council members at that time, and from that workshop, alternative 2B was selected as the preferred design concept. Alternative 2B, as I mentioned before, it included a combined facility. So now you only have, you take all those three waste streams, you put them together, and you have one set of treatment processes and disposal processes. The design capacity would be for 3.0 million gallons per day, with the ability to expand to 3.5. It relied on an extended aeration activated sludge secondary treatment process, which would be a transition from the current aerated pond type of treatment process that the plant has now. And then it also allowed for the addition of treatment processes, so that there would be production of recycled water, which could be discharged to SSJID. The purpose of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project was to take the concept of alternative 2B, refine it, and then develop design documents that would go to construction. The major tasks associated with the project included an alternative 2B validation study. The importance, or the reason for this study, was because there was a recognition that the master plan primarily looked at capacity and from a treatment side and a disposal side, but it didn't evaluate alternatives for what that treatment process would be. It also didn't take a close analysis of historical data for the treatment processes. So there was this recognition that that work would be beneficial to be done prior to moving forward with design documents. After the validation study is completed, or was completed, then the concept was to move forward with a preliminary and final design. There also was inclusion of a funding component, because there was recognition that this would be a huge project, and to reduce the impact to rate pairs and even to just implement the project would require some source of funding. Permitting documents would need to be completed prior to the completion of construction, and then assistance from the designer would be provided for bidding and construction. When the alternative 2B validation study was started, we took a look at the historical issues and documents, which I have mentioned previously, and we also looked and compiled the monthly and annual monitoring data that had been gathered over six years of time. We met with city staff and did multiple site visits to the treatment facility to discuss their concerns, see if there were any other issues that hadn't been identified previously, and also to discuss their input on the concept for alternative 2B. On this slide, I've included some pictures of issues that hadn't been identified in the master plan and hadn't been identified in the cease and desist order. There is severe erosion occurring at the treatment plant, particularly with regard to the domestic ponds. On the first picture on the left side, closest to the text, you can see how that is an anchor for the surface aerators, and it's nearly falling into the ponds. It wasn't designed that way. It's just that way now, because so much of the berm has eroded. You can also see how some of the berm side slopes there are near vertical. It wasn't originally that way. There's tarp at some of the pond inlets to mitigate erosion that occurs. There's exposed aggregate at the existing domestic headwork structure. There's infrastructure that no longer works, because it's no longer connected, as it should be, to the other existing structures. And there's also challenges associated with being able to maintain the perimeter of the property due to the side slopes abutting the fence line. So these were some of the issues that were added to our consideration as we were going through the validation study. We also had multiple discussions on challenges with moving forward with the alternative 2B concept. One of those challenges was the seasonal flow variations associated with the industrial processors. Really, the industrial flows, their heaviest three to four months of the year, and the rest of the month, they're barely present. And during those three to four months of the year, the flows are about six times what your domestic flows are, and the loading from solids and biological material is, can vary between five to 10 times what you see in domestic wastewater. So for a short period of time in the year, you have these high loading conditions that don't exist for the rest of the time of year. So whatever project is selected, or was selected to be moved forward, it needed to be able to handle those significant swings in flows and loads. We also talked about operational requirements associated with moving from an aerated pond type of system to activated sludge. Activated sludge is a more complex process. You more than double the mechanical equipment required. You go from having to make adjustments on maybe a weekly to monthly basis to monitoring the system daily. You have daily wasting of solids, whereas with ponds, you have wasting, or really you deal with those solids at most every year, like, such as what the plant staff do now for the industrial side. But on the domestic side, they haven't dealt with solids for over 15 years, from what we can tell based on historical records. So that's a big change when moving towards a more complex, advanced, activated sludge-type process. And then permitting-wise, as you move up in complexity, the permit requirements change too. So, going from aerated ponds to activated sludge, you now start to have higher level of operator certifications required. You have increased amounts of reporting, and then when you layer recycled water on top of that, you're adding another permit, you're looking at staffing. Now you would go from five days a week to staffing seven days a week. So all of these items were discussed. We brainstormed some ideas on how to meet the goals of the project while maybe having less of a capital and operating cost impact on the city. And so, we developed some modifications to alternative 2B. These modifications included maintaining the ability to separately treat industrial and storm wastewater, yet adding the flexibility to combine the flows during the non-peak times of the year. We were able to develop a concept for staying with aerated ponds for the time being, yet allowing for future transition to an activated sludge type of treatment process in the future. And then we discussed ways to phase the project. So, with that concept of phasing, the ideas associated with alternative 2B related to producing recycled water weren't completely taken out, like, they weren't, there's still a possibility for future, but they were taken out of the base project. So what the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project looks like today is there would be significant regrading and addition of soil cement for slope stability to reduce the chance of the berms eroding, as well as lining of the ponds. We would be adding a screen for the domestic flows, transitioning to having diffusers similar to what you would see in an extended air activated sludge plant, but also sticking with the surface aerators, but replacing them. There would be... There would be improvements to the piping and electrical infrastructure and then the option with these improvements to co-mingle the industrial storm and domestic wastewater. On the disposal side, we would stick with improvements to the percolation ponds. They would be regraded. There would be a perimeter access road added, which would make it easier to maintain the outer berms associated with the percolation ponds. There would be the addition of slope protection such as riprap on the inside berms and then improvements to the piping and valving so you can have flexibility in taking ponds offline for operation and maintenance concerns. I wanted to touch a little bit more on the concept for phasing the project. This is a huge project overall. The overall cost is estimated to be $40 million. But with the configuration of the plant, having multiple ponds, as well as the need to maintain the operation of the wastewater treatment plant throughout construction, it just lended itself to being able to be phased into smaller step-by-step projects. And we identified nine phases. This table summarizes those nine phases and the costs associated with those phases. There's a pattern to how the projects are phased. That pattern tends to be where you do some improvements, plan for taking ponds offline, then take those ponds offline and prepare them for the next set of improvements. And so that's why all the phases in white tend to be the removal of solids. So those are smaller phases. It's something that occurs regularly on the industrial side of the plant now, and those are phases where you, plant staff could take care of the draining and drying of the ponds and could are very familiar with contractors in the area who could provide the service of removing solids. Where we are with the project today, we've completed multiple documents. I think the most noteworthy is completing the report of waste discharge, which has been submitted to the regional board. This is the document that's needed to begin the permitting process. A new permit would be required with these improvements. We've also prepared 90% plans for the overall scope of the project, and the decision is to decide on whether or not we want to phase the project and how those phases would be organized before going any further on the design. And upcoming tasks are big ones. They are the recognition that this project costs a lot of money, and we want to identify what the impacts would be to the ratepayers. So my understanding is that city staff have the approval to move forward with a rate study. There's also been coordination with the industries. City staff have had a couple of meetings with the industries. They are an important part of the project. If you look at total annual flows into the treatment plant, the industries account for about 53%. So they would be paying about 53% of the overall project cost. So it's really important that they are aware of what's going on and that they are on board with this project. And we've also been trying to identify funding options. The original project scope included the application for USDA funding. The city manager has been aware of some other potential grant opportunities. None of them have come to fruition yet, but we're definitely keeping an eye out for grant opportunities, preferably in low-interest loans secondarily as far as how this project would be funded. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
I've got some, please.
Sure.
A few slides back, we looked at a nine-phase, can we go back? Can we go back to that slide, please? And it showed the cost of $40 million. What is the timeline associated with those nine phases? What are we talking about?
Yeah.
Time of completion per phase, total completion for the project?
So some of the phases are weather-dependent as well as season-dependent. So it would partially depend on when the work is started and whether you want to go do the whole project at once or go out to bid separately. Because when you go out to bid, that could lengthen the amount of time. We could try to time it. So roughly, I would say, like if you're just doing it all, it's at least a two to three-year project at minimum.
That's true. And then you had mentioned that industry takes up about 53% of the wastewater that goes out, and the expectation would be that they would pick up that part of the tab. My question to you and then also to staff would be, is that a number so large that we drive additional industry out of Escalon? And is that in line with other communities? Are other industries incurring such a large bill in order to operate in nearby cities, say Ripon, Stockton, Modesto, Oakdale?
You know, so city staff have begun discussions. My understanding is that they wouldn't, they don't really want to be on board with these improvements. I think that they have been lucky because the plant itself has gotten behind on the upgrades, and that's why the upgrades are needed. So you probably really look at what the cost impact is over, say, 20 years. You know, it just depends on what that discussion is with the industries. I know it varies depending on the area as far as what the costs are. I think it would definitely be a consideration for them. The closest industry I can think of is in Oakdale with Conagra, and they have their own treatment facility, but they are dealing with their own cost issues because they have to deal with similar issues where their existing treatment plant is under more stringent requirements.
I have two more questions. One, back to the $40 million. That places that $20 million burden on residents. Typically, when a project like this is done, I heard you mention 20 years. Is this something that we're looking at consistent increases for the next 20 years? Or would it be something that's in line with your experience? Is it this huge hit that happens upfront and then it slowly dwindles down? Or is it just like a steady year after year increase until that's been paid for?
I think you would probably see a huge hit because it just all depends on how it's funded. But if you did the whole project at once, you would need a loan. And then the rate increase would take into account the terms of that loan. And so early on, you would need to meet the repayment of that loan. And so it's not going to, that part won't increase over the 20 years or the lifespan. But you would probably see over time the increasing costs associated with labor and electricity. So.
Interest on the loan.
Yeah.
Okay, final question, and it's probably a silly one because it looks like we have to do it. But just to entertain myself, I guess, what happens if we don't do it? And like a timeline, if we didn't do it in the next five years or something, what happens?
So I would say that the regional board has been very lenient with the city. We have informed them about the project. They could at any time begin fining the city, and that would really start to force your hand. So it's hard to say when they might start to fine, but that is in the realm of possibility. And that's probably when you would really realize that, okay, we really need to do this. In that interim, it's a risk that the city is taking on its own as far as not doing the improvements.
Sorry, I said there was, that was my last question. But not to kick the can down the road, but when we're looking at fines and we're weighing a $40 million cost versus a fine to buy us time potentially, are these like erroneously, are they like huge amounts in fines? Are we looking at being fined hundreds of thousands of dollars every month, day, week, whatever it is that we're not compliant or not with the plan? Is it, or are they like slap on the wrist fines?
It varies. It varies depending on the situation. I don't, I don't know the maximum amount that the regional board could find. I think there is a maximum per day. So we just accumulate because they'd probably go as far as they could to provide incentive to the city to do the improvements.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. You sounded very thorough and educated on what you do.
I just have one question.
Please.
What phases are actually critical? Like I guess this is both for Public Works and for you. Like what's actually critical to making our facility run efficiently? Like do we have to do all these steps? Or is this something that is the ideal Cadillac plan?
I would say some phases are more critical than others, but in order for the product to be complete, where you've completely rehabbed the facility, you would need to complete all of the phases. The most critical, which I would highly recommend trying to get done, is the addition of a domestic headworks. I've noticed that in the monthly reports going back a couple of years, there's this regular item about pond five. You have, there's aerator issues, there's ragging. Because there's a large accumulation of solids, the headworks would help reduce that. So I think that's a critical component to get done early on. That's why in phase one, you want to do it before you rehab any of the domestic ponds. The lining of the ponds, the regrading of the ponds, those are all important. And so those are pretty much every other phase because there's just so many ponds at the plant that it could be split to that level.
Thank you, and I'm assuming Public Works, Jake, do you want to say something? Or would you rather me ask Justin that question?
Yeah, we should probably ask Justin that question. But what I'll add to it is if you have any questions, I would ask for a visit. Because with this information that you guys have, seeing it personally, it'll make more sense. Once you're out there, the pictures might do it justice.
Sounds good.
Once you walk around and you drive around, you'll be able to make sense of it all. What she's trying to explain.
Yeah.
You'll be able to see it firsthand.
Makes sense.
And Tom knows too.
Tom, do you have anything you'd like to say about this or? Okay, I'm good then, if you're good with what she just said.
Any questions down here? Councilman Schramm, you had a question or two?
Sure, so thank you for the presentation. First question is, so on the list of demands that we just voted to approve a short time ago, we purchased three new aerators. Is there any way that we can incorporate those aerators into the new design?
Yes.
Okay.
They can definitely be incorporated. The treatment ponds have, I'm thinking, are in the range of 50 to 60 aerators total. So that gives you an idea of, I think, how many would you like replaced regularly and annually?
So that's part of the project that we have recurring with the industries. We actually do five a year. This year was actually three. Full aerators just to replace a motor. We do every year have recurring five trying to go through. Run about 910 horsepower. Five don't last very long.
So one of the questions that we've been asking as a council is, you know, we see the progress billings from Blackwater, but I think it would be really helpful to council and to our constituents if we had some sort of project schedule or a timeline showing specific milestones and when decisions need to be made in order to, you know, you said right now we're at 90% CD. Okay, so when does a 100% CD decision need to be made? Similarly to that, when do we need a go-no-go decision from the industries? Because that will allow council to make a decision based off of these milestones and help make the decisions that need to be made. So I think it would be really helpful if we had just a preliminary milestone schedule with some of those. Next question is the estimated construction costs. So as we all know, we've been hit with escalation a lot on construction projects. So these, this $40 million, is that dollars today? Or is that dollars from when the project was first budgeted in 2019? Is that anticipated construction cost two years from now?
It's today's dollars. So we have, because we've been regularly working on the project, these are pretty up to date as far as the construction costs for today. It doesn't include any price escalation for an assumption on when the project would actually get built. And if it was phased, then the amounts would be, should be in today's dollar, $40 million, but they would actually end up being bigger, you know, larger because of the future price escalations.
I think it would also be helpful on this particular slide that we're looking at, if we could add a column similar to what Councilman Engel was requesting, kind of scheduled timelines. Okay, phase one is anticipated to take X months. Phase two is two months. That way, we can actually see the durations for the different phases as well. Two more questions. Staff, can we share this presentation as part of the minutes of the meeting? That way, we can make sure that folks aren't here and have questions. They can go back and digest it and ask those questions.
So what we've been doing is when a presentation is made at the council meeting, the next day it's posted alongside that agenda for that date. So we did the presentation on, I think it was August 21st, in regards to goals and objectives. And then it was posted at that agenda with the packet right underneath PowerPoint, goals and objectives for council, and that PowerPoint was added. So this one will be added tomorrow onto the website under the September 5th agenda packet.
Okay.
For reference. We'll go ahead and, I mean, we could post it as is, or we could make the updates that are being requested to the timeline on this page and then add it afterwards.
I think it's important to add the timelines and.
So we can, we can update this page to reflect that time, those timelines, and then post it up tomorrow.
My last question is, so alternative two B was done by an alter, a different design firm. And I know it's slide 10, but can you just explain to us how Blackwater took what was previously designed by the other firm and enhanced two B?
Oh, it's probably around slide 10. Or maybe, let's go back a couple more slides, maybe seven? Okay, so this slide, that picture's actually taken from the master plan that was prepared by a different consultant. So there was a lot of information in that master plan study that we took, and we used that information. We followed up with specific manufacturers of the technologies that were mentioned in the report, gathered data. Then we added to it the monthly monitoring report data that we had as well as the input from city staff. So that's how we took that alternative and then updated it.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Couple of questions with regard to the industry and the flow of product coming into our plant. What kind of pretreatment are they currently doing? And if they were to improve their quality of effluent coming to us, could that change the scope of this project enough to save money somewhere along the line? Or is it cheaper for them just to pay into our side of it and send us the bulk raw, if you will, from their facilities? Is there a balance there somehow?
There is probably a balance, and I think that will be part of the continuing discussion with the industry. So right now, the major discharge discharger is Escalon Premier Brands. And they have what's called a dissolved air flotation unit. It's kind of like it adds small air bubbles and helps skim off some of the small. It's kind of like it adds small air bubbles and helps skim off the, some of the smaller solids. And then, uh, they also have screening. There's potential for them to add more pretreatment. The master plan actually mentioned the, the study of a, a micro screen. We, we piloted a, a similar micro screen recently. While it was able to remove solids, it, uh, had difficulty, um, dealing with that, that waste stream. But there are the possibility, there's the possibility of doing more treatment, um, on the industrial properties, um, prior to that wastewater coming to the plant. And that would reduce the cost of the treatment at the plant's side. Because a significant amount of the cost associated with treating the industrial wastewater has to do with the high organic loads, the, the high solids coming in. So if they reduce their flows, if they could take out more of the solids and organics that would reduce the amount of air, the number of aerators that need to be provided, the volume of the pond depending on the level that they were able to reduce, um, to, to pre-treat.
Okay, and currently, you said the plant was gonna have three million gallons, I think it was a day or something like that?
So that's the alternative to B capacity.
To B capacity. What is our current capacity versus what we're gonna possibly see in the future? What's the jump between current and new?
Okay, so current, because there's the, the two treatment plants in one, you've got, on the domestic side, the permitted capacity is point nine MGD. You're actually seeing around point five MGD coming into the plant now. And then on the industrial side, that capacity rating in the permit is, um, a little bit more unusual. It's in terms of, uh, monthly average flow. And I think it's, it can't exceed three point two MDD, somewhere in that range.
Not a large necessarily jump overall in capacity.
Yes, not a large.
Not a large. I'm just considering future growth, how long this plant, we dropped forty million now, what's the future expectancy of those upgrades? Are they gonna outlive roughly thirty-year loan that our citizens are gonna pay for? Or are we gonna be back here twenty years going, we've outreached our capacity, now we have to do Plan C or whatever the next level is because we've exceeded capacity? What does that look like?
So, so the design capacity is, uh, we didn't stick with the three-point MGD, three-point zero MGD rating. We, we stuck with the, the existing permit limits. So it's, it's similar to three, but not exactly the same. How does it, what does it look like, um, in terms of meeting the growth needs of the city? We had contacted the industries, they didn't anticipate any changes in their flows in the future. And then as far as the city, um, we're discharging about point five and then we'd have a rating of point nine. So you're looking at, um, being able to accommodate almost double the, the population size in the city.
So we're staying within the restriction of our current permit?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what the capacity is, the equipment we're putting in? Or can, at some point in time, bump that as needed and the equipment still supports a four or a five million gallons is my question? We have equipment going in, what's its true capacity? We're, right now we're saying we're gonna stay with the permit, but does it have more capacity than we're actually asking for?
Yeah.
On the permit?
Okay, so it does have the potential to be expanded to more capacity. And, and at that time, depending on how much expansion you want, then you would probably be looking at transitioning from a aerated pond type system to an activated sludge. So, so one of the advantages associated with activated sludge is that it has a, a smaller footprint requirement for the same amount of capacity. So at that time, that's one way where you could, um, increase the capacity of the plant without necessarily doing any major changes to the layout. That's part of this.
So it wouldn't require more additional equipment? Or would it, would you have more?
It would prob, it would, so if you're transitioning to activated sludge, it would require secondary clarifiers. You might be looking at more aeration, although right now the, the ponds are so large that, um, it might be a matter of reconfiguring how that aeration is provided and where it's provided.
The equipment we're currently going, it sounds like it's not gonna necessarily jump much more than a three point five. The current equipment we're putting in is roughly three point five capacity is what we're going with right now. Okay. Any other questions for the presentation? Anybody out in the audience here that had questions that would like to ask? Or anybody online for that matter? If there's anybody online that would like to speak up?
Nobody online.
Ask another question?
It would probably be, um... Well, it depends on what that facility. There's gonna be a significant amount of regrading and reconfiguring done as this project. So it's, it's almost like, like building a new facility. A lot of rehabilitation. I don't think it would, um, because it, it, it depends on what type of treatment process you're going with, what you would, what the vision is for that, that new facility. I, I think, um, it would tend to be more, more about the same price.
Ask another question. So you indicated that industry is up fifty-two, fifty-three percent of, not necessarily the reason, but we're doing this project to, to help accommodate the industry fifty-two, fifty-three percent. What's the alternative if industry says, "Sorry, we're not gonna contribute, we're not gonna play that game. It's your problem, city of Escalon, not ours." What's the alternative?
So the alternative would be to design strictly for the upgrades to the domestic facilities and not do any upgrades to the industrial side. And, um, the city has annual permits with those industries, so the decision could be made not to renew those permits.
And what's the cost of just the domestic side of the project?
We didn't split out those costs, um...
Slightly under twenty million, I would assume, if we're fifty-three, fifty-four...
If you do the math.
My guess is that it would be, it would be under twenty million. There's a bit of, um... Some of the configuration is designed to take those high industrial loads, so I could see it being less than the, the city's portion of, of this project, you know, because now you've, uh, there's, there's a complexity that those industrial flows add because of the, the seasonal variations. So if you were to take those out to upgrade just to serve the domestic side, I could see it being less than the remaining forty-seven percent of this project. Maybe in the ra, like a rough guess, maybe in the range of thirty-five to forty percent. It's...
Okay, thank you.
So, question again, with the plan we go through, we put it in, takes three years to build. Two years past that, we have another industry that wants to come to town. What does that do to our capacity? If somebody else like a premier or actor came to town and said, "We'd love to build an Escalon and start up a processing plant." What does that look like for our community as the capacity for that?
The treatment plant wouldn't have the capacity to take another large industry. They could maybe take a small industry, but then that would start to eat into your capacity for, um, growth within the, the residential and commercial, smaller commercial areas in the city.
Any other questions? Great, I think we're good. Thank you so much for coming out, I do appreciate the update.
Yeah, listen.
All right, next up, item number seven, consider requests for reduced and deferred development impact fees from cornerstone construction for a proposed senior housing project referred to as country wood cottages and allow the city manager and/or her designee to execute an agreement for the fee reduction slash deferral staff.
Thank you, Mayor. That was, uh, half the staff report there? As was read, the item before you is a fee reduction for a proposed age-restricted apartment complex, um, just, what is that? Just east of the McDonald's site. At the August seventh, twenty twenty-three city council meeting, um, the item was heard before the, the council and council-directed staff really to go back and fine-tune, um, the request to be more in line with, you know, what the city was looking for. So since that time, the staff has met with the applicant who is in the room today, and we've, um, kind of fine-tuned the overall proposal, and I will share that with you. Again, this is an eighteen total unit, um, apartment complex. Seventeen of those units are one-bedroom, one-bath. They are seven hundred and twenty-eight square feet. And then there's one manager's unit that's, um, in the range of six hundred square feet. So the, um, couple of the comments that, uh, council wanted to see is, is a local first priority and a, a higher age limit. So we have coordinated with our legal team as well as the applicant to figure out a way to handle both of those. While this is a privately funded project, there are still state housing laws that, um, we have to navigate, anti-discrimination laws that, that we have to navigate. So on the local first policy and the age restriction up to sixty-two, the applicant is willing to do both of those. With the local first policy, what that would likely have to be is live or work in the city of Escalon, um, not just live in the city of Escalon. So there is, um, less discrimination there in terms of who you are, are choosing. And then the age restricted, um, we are able to do that because of the size of the project. And so while we're still working on the mechanism, what we want to do here in this item is, is to get, you know, sort of final direction or approval of, of the fee reduction and fee deferral. But then, as the project moves forward, if the council chose to approve it, um, we would work on that mechanism of how to solidify the deal points and the agreement points with, um, our legal, um, our legal counsel. But it would look something like the applications would come in and those that were local live or work in Escalon as well as those who are sixty-two years or older would be, you know, sort of at the top of the list. And then the, um, project proponent would go down the list, um, until all units were satisfied. So for instance, if you had a local sixty-two or older, but they didn't meet the, um, the, gosh, I always forget this word, the credit scores. The credit score, for instance, or, you know, had some transgression in their past, that would not be an applicant that they would choose and they would keep going down the list. The other, um, thing that the applicant, um, is willing to do is a rent cap. So we would cap, um, the rent for the first twenty-four months at the going rate, probably about sixteen hundred. So capped at twenty-four, um, months at that rate and then would, um, do a max increase of five percent over the next five years. He has, the, the project proponent would have the ability to go more than the five percent, um, by state law, but he would cap it at the five percent for the five years. Would handle our, um, inclusionary housing requirements through, uh, voucher through the county. So two units of the eighteen would need to be, um, affordable in that realm, and, and that would be, um, through the county housing choice voucher. So for those, um, the applicant is looking for, um, a fee deferment, so spread the fees over a period of years, about five years, where twenty percent of the total fee would be paid at occupancy of the building. And then the other eighty percent would be paid, um, over the next four years at twenty percent per year. And then, um, looking for a reduction in, um, one fee really, the parks and recreation fee, about a fifty percent, uh, reduction in, in that fee total. And so those are the, um, proposed terms, I guess we'll call them terms of the agreement. That is before the council tonight for your consideration. And then as I mentioned, um, should the council approve it, we would work with our legal team and the applicant on the actual mechanism, actual agreement. And we, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council has or the public.
All right, um, we can open up the public. Do you have any questions you'd like to ask at this time about this project? Either the council or the developer? That's fine.
I have no problem with the deferred. My problem is, being in the senior category, um, I wouldn't be able to afford to live there with the, um, market rate. And, um, the majority of the seniors that I know that are looking for housing aren't gonna be able to afford the market rate at sixteen hundred dollars a month. So, um, I would ask that you would carefully consider not lowering fees, it's market rate. It's not, um, all affordable or low income. And the majority of our seniors are not looking for that type of price tag on a monthly basis. I couldn't do it. And I'm, I, you know, low, low income, but I wouldn't be able to afford it. So I would just say very carefully, you know, we're looking for ways to raise our fees, we, recreation, you know, I mean, I'm a senior, I, we, seniors, we use parks, we use our recreation, we, you know, we support our team, we all close down for homecoming and go to the game, right? Go to the parade. So just deferred, not a problem, but I would really think carefully about those fees. Thanks.
I was wondering if anyone has done a market share study? Because I'm just curious as to how many seniors we have, what we had asked for specifically, and I believe this is what you're addressing, we had asked for help for the, the folks in the middle, the people that make a little bit too much for low income and they don't make enough for the, these high-priced places right now. And there's, there's a number of seniors that were interested in that middle group. But I'm just wondering, has there been a market share to find out how many seniors we have, what their income is? And are we dividing this out correctly?
We have not prepared that analysis. It's not, it is something a city does, but, um, this is a private development that is coming forward and, and wants to develop in the city of Escalon. You know, they, they are in charge of, of their marketing, um, understanding the market, um, and, you know, seeing if it's a viable market.
Now, I also assume, since, since I was just called from a, a, a different apartment, um, group that had a one-bedroom, and the, uh, they offered it to me for four thousand ninety-five a month. It did include food and some services. Now, is this sixteen? I'm, I'm assuming doesn't include food, but does it have any, like, housekeeping, anything that's in, included in that sixteen hundred?
Not to my knowledge, but I'll defer to the applicant, um, when it's their time to answer that question fully.
The last question or the last comment I have is the number of us seniors that asked to be involved and to give input into the final design of the apartments? And is that still gonna be an open opportunity for us to participate? We did do, we submitted some, some specific requests to the city. They had it all broken down as to what we were looking for. But we would also like to be a part of the, at least one meeting discussion with the builders. Is that...
It might be up to the developer, that's a private development, they're not using any city resources and land like the other senior projects we were talking about for those lists. I'm not sure that... I'm not sure that they're obligated to look at that list or make the changes that you guys might want. I mean, if they're open to that development, great, that conversation, but it's not required for the development, I don't believe.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
And this does not, I mean, if we were going forward with this private development, that does not negate us going forward on another senior development, right?
Not at all, not at all.
This is just a separate development, and so in that other development, we would be continuing that conversation with our seniors, but this would be a separate project.
Yeah, this is a separate project from the city project that we're trying to move forward with, with CCH. Total separate project, yeah.
Council, my name is Jeff Sales. I'm the applicant. And I can answer any questions in regard to the other question. Is there, I don't have any other, I guess, supportive services that are a part of the project. That's not my expertise or anything else, so. The one thing is that there will be solar on the project, and so some of that solar gets distributed to the tenants, so there would be a reduced electric cost to the tenants.
Any questions up here? Have you done a market study to see if the seniors in Escalon can afford $1,600?
If I could jump in super quickly, I just wanted to remind everyone that the discussion tonight is limited to just the fee deferral fee impact. So I think that question is okay. I just don't want us to go too far afield of what's actually on for tonight. So you can answer the question.
I haven't done a specific fee or a study for Escalon. We just finished a 35-unit complex that's very similar to this in Modesto, and it's been renting up quickly, and so I think it's at the same price point as far as the monthly rent.
So it's my understanding that there's two different needs in this town. There's fair market and there's attainable. Am I missing something on that? I think when I talked to Ann last, that's the conversation I had with her. Obviously, the concerns that I see would be, one, would you be open to having that conversation with the seniors as to, you know, what kind of things you might have in the project? And if there wasn't a deal breaker, you know, something that was going to create a major issue, if that was something you potentially would do?
Yeah, I'd be happy to meet with them. I wouldn't make a contingent upon whatever they may say or ask for, but yeah, I'd be happy to get their input and incorporate whatever I can.
And then the other thing I would be maybe addressing more to staff would be making sure that, you know, prior to anything, you know, 100% that we make sure that we do have the actual, the need, which I think we do, but to confirm that that's really the truth within our own town for fair market. And if it's there, then I see where this project meets, you know, that need. If it's not, then obviously, it's not. I was hoping maybe we could look into that as well.
Question on the fees. You first came up, you were looking for some reductions on the sewer and the water. At that point, we're only asking for parks and rec at the current moment, correct? So the other stuff is at our full normal rate at the time the project starts? So our fees and everything will be at market?
Exactly. Everything else except the parks and recreation fee is at 100% of the city's current. Staff actually made the recommendation to not reduce the sewer water connection. Those are more direct costs to the city, and therefore, we recommend moving away from the connection fees with a little bit of an increase to the reduction in the parks and rec, because that's more to cover things that the city could do.
And yeah, I'm looking forward to it. I think this is a good project, and hopefully, we got enough Escalon residents to get in there. But to a certain extent, you're a developer, and it's his risk, not the city's risk. If they're not full, he has to lower the rent or change as such, so, yeah. I'm okay with the current request and ask to move a project forward in our town myself.
I'm okay with it, pending just one thought. That's making sure that we do have the need that's here. You know, that's not, just to confirm that that's the truth. Because otherwise, all we're doing is inboarding other people, you know what I'm saying? So I'd like to make sure that it is there, and I'm pretty sure it is. But I just would like to confirm it. That would be my take on it.
If I can make a suggestion to council in terms of, as you prepare to make a recommendation, direction to staff tonight, something that might work well here is a direction to staff to come back at the next meeting with a generally applicable policy for fee deferrals and reductions. And then that would be in the form of a resolution, so it could take effect immediately, and then it could apply to this project, but it would also ensure that it applies equally to projects in the future. I don't think we would, you know, necessarily, it won't slow the process for this project down much, because we could bring it back at the next meeting and then have it go forward immediately compared to a one-off agreement with this applicant. And then what we still don't have is a go-forward, fully applicable fee deferment.
But I think, council, I think that we would like to reserve that on a case-by-case basis. So by approving a blanket policy, then it's across the board, everybody. Whereas I can't speak for the other four, but I would recommend that we look at it case-by-case, because what happens if there's a multifamily project that actually does have a huge impact on parks and rec, then we need to look at that project completely different than a senior project. And so we have to look at projects on a case-by-case basis as opposed to a citywide policy.
I take your point. I think the flip side of that is the risk that any given developer is unhappy with a case-by-case decision, feels that it's made on an ad hoc basis. So I think that it's just two sides of the coin. And the way that you maybe would try to mitigate the risk if you went forward with a policy approach is to carve out scenarios where you retain some of that discretion, right? But you've got at least a framework to work within, so that there's less ground for an aggrieved applicant to say, well, you made the decision based on factors that don't apply equally to everyone.
I think we already have that with the set fees we have. That's the start, the bar minimum we have. And if they want to build and they build at that rate, we're happy. If they want an adjustment to that, come talk. I think that's more than reasonable. Otherwise, I agree that everybody's going to be wanting the slice of pie out of whatever fees that we're willing to freely give up. That means we're just reducing fees for everybody, and I want to avoid that myself.
Yeah, I think there's personally a difference between needs and wants. And I think that's what Dave's getting at.
Mr. Sales, what's the name of your community in Modesto?
Magnolia Gardens.
Magnolia Gardens.
Mr. Mayor, may I add my two cents, please? First, I want to say, Jalen and Mr. Sales, from where we were last meeting to where we are today, it shows that you guys really got together and worked on something that met the requests that we had during that meeting. So I thank you both. It's my personal opinion that locally, we've got a bad rap as far, or bad reputation as far as building or development is concerned in Escalon. And I do realize that we have a small growth ordinance. I do also realize that we have 75 permits that we can fill every year. And it's my understanding, the last time we did that was the 90s? Is that correct?
Probably.
Dominique, thank you. Which is part of the reason why I think we'll see in the next presentation, we don't have a lot of money, or there's projected that we're not going to have anymore. And at some point, if we don't bring something to the housing element in Escalon, somebody else is going to come in and tell us that we're going to have to do what they want rather than what we have a choice in saying. The demographic, I hear everybody's concern. It is potentially out of the reach of some of our local residents. But if we were to bring in, import people into our town, I think that's the demographic that is going to have expendable income, is going to go to restaurants and spend money, is not going to mind spending the extra few dollars in our stores, which I know a lot of people say they're a little overpriced. They're going to have that expendable income to be able to go. And we're inviting new residents into our town. I know there's some opposition to that all the way around. It's been talked about here that Escalon residents will get a first shot. That's fantastic. They get the first shot if there's anything left over. The people that we're inviting in, I think, is a great addition to our community. And I think that the fees will help us short-term. The taxes that they end up paying will help us a little bit longer term. The money that they spend in town will help us longer term, and they will help us get to that 75 permit, in my opinion, goal that we should have and we should be utilizing for the next several years. We've looked at the MSR. It shows that at that rate, our growth is, what was it, 10,000? More additional people over the next 30 years? Is that correct, Dominique?
I don't even notice that.
10,000 over 30 years, something like that? So still relatively small growth over an entire generation plus. It just a little over-doubles us. And for those of us that want to stay here and have our kids and our grandkids be here, there is some infrastructure work we have to do, as we saw in the last presentation. And if we continually shut down ideas or ways to get things developed in town, we're going to maintain that reputation that we're not a fun place to work with and don't even bother. And we need to encourage people to come here and spend money here and build here. So just my two cents. I think you guys did a great job. I'm in 100% agreeance with what you guys have came up with. And I do also agree with my fellow councilmen as far as not having a blanket, like, fee reduction policy, but that it would be on a case-by-case basis.
Any other comments or concerns here? Without what said, is that your motion then, I guess would be my question?
Sure.
That almost sounded like a motion there.
Okay.
Want to restate a motion there?
Yeah, let me scroll back here so I can tell you exactly what my motion would be. Under the request, is that where my motion would be?
I do put on the screen too, right there at the recommendation, yeah.
Recommendation. So I would motion to approve the request for reduced and deferred development impact fees for cornerstone construction for a proposed senior housing project referred to as Countrywood cottages, and allow the city manager or her designee to execute an agreement for the fee reduction slash deferral.
Oh, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Five-oh?
Yeah, aye.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Looking forward to the project. All right. We get into the next up here. Number eight, receive a presentation on the 2324 preliminary budget overview for the city's general fund and water enterprise funds. Staff.
Let me just pull that presentation up here. There we go. Do you want the staff report first, or there?
I don't know if you want to introduce it or...
What would you like to start with?
Just the PowerPoint, actually. Go ahead.
Okay, will do. There we go.
Okay, I think we're ready to go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council for the record. Andy Heath, financial consultant to the city of Escalon. What I'd like to do for you tonight is go through a presentation on some information that's been put together regarding your budget, and then some things that will actually help the budget process this year and, more importantly, in the future in terms of gauging sustainability in your most discretionary fund, which is your general fund. So if you go to the next slide, please. As part of tonight's presentation, I'll give you an update on the preparation process to date, some of the things the council has already considered, and then what we have done since the presentation that came before the council some time ago on the budget. We'll look at the preliminary budget for the 2324 general fund. You've seen some of this. What I tried to do in putting the budget, re-putting the budget together, is make it a little bit more transparent, so you can see exactly where all the revenues and where all the expenditures are in the budget itself. And then, more importantly, develop that forecast, so you can see how these numbers are being derived and what they mean for the future, and all the components associated with the revenues and expenditures. With that, we'll go over the revenues and expenditures. Then I'll give you a forecast for your reserves, otherwise known as your fund balance, and what those look like in the future. We'll go over the 2324 preliminary budget for the water enterprise fund as well. Wanted to, I've only been with the city for about six weeks, so it's been a very time-consuming process converting all of its information. But I was able to complete the water enterprise fund and show you what that enterprise looks like as well. And I've worked on the sewer enterprise fund today. Then we'll go over the revenues and expenditures and capital projects and the fund balances for the water fund as well. Next slide, please. So looking particularly at the budget preparation process, this builds upon a draft budget that was completed for all citywide funds that was presented in a PowerPoint presentation to the city council, I believe, about a month and a half ago or two months ago. That information, the information that was put together by the former financial director was all prepared. It was prepared very well, from my perspective, in my opinion. And it was very easy to follow. And I was able to really take her information and parlay that into what I believe is a more transparent budget document that ultimately you will have for all of your citywide funds. I reviewed and updated your fiscal '22, '23 activities. So as you might recall, the city just finished its fiscal year '22, '23 on June 30th, about two months ago. And I updated all of that fiscal activity. So keep in mind that when you close a fiscal year, just because it's June 30th doesn't mean you have all the balances that you need to know exactly where you're at. You have what's called an accrual process, where many revenues, particularly sales tax and sometimes property taxes, are received after June 30th for the previous fiscal year. You've got to accrue those back and actually put those as an accounting entry into that fiscal year. Similarly, accrued payroll that's paid in July, you don't have that problem here, but for June, and other payables as well. Sometimes you don't get a bill for a pump that you bought June 27th until July 27th. Well, when you pay that bill, you have to accrue that back to the previous fiscal year's number. So what I've done is I've actually gone through all your transactions in July and August, and I've actually accrued that information back into the numbers that you're seeing as part of the budget schedules that you have with you and as part of the numbers that you'll see tonight. I've also reviewed future revenue expenditure trends and forecasts, particularly looking at anything that the city does contract with, particularly mini-services or avenue insights for your sales tax function. Use that information to develop sales tax forecasts for the current year and for the next few years. And then looked at trend analysis. So I've gone back two years, looked at 2021 data, 2122, 2223 just finished, and tried to parlay a lot of that into the future when I'm looking at revenues and expenditures. The big issue here has to do with, of course, what we just went through with COVID. COVID was a huge anomaly in the economy. So you can't really straight-line anything when you got that COVID blip in there in 2021 and part to 2122. So I'm just building upon my experiences and working with other cities and what I've seen them come to over the last couple of years when I'm putting your forecast together. Preparation of the financial forecast are what I call a model for the city's general fund. As you'll see, this is a sustainability gauge and a tool that you will definitely be able to use well into the future. It's very iterative. You can change it on the fly. It has many assumption factors ranging from labor bargaining group percentage increases by fiscal year for multiple fiscal years to sales tax increases for each fiscal year, property tax. I mean, everything is in there. Preparation of all budget schedules into transparent format, I talked about that. And then, of course, the meeting tonight, where we're actually going through everything. So if you go to the next slide, please. So when you look at the general fund, you'll see that if you compare this information to what you actually saw about a month and a half ago for the city's general fund, it's not much different in terms of the bottom line. You had slated using about $1.2 million of your reserves, meaning that you had an imbalanced budget where your total expenditures that you were slated to appropriate for fiscal '23, '24, $5.95 million, was $1.2 million more than the revenues that were actually slated to come in for that fiscal year of $4.75 million. This use of reserves can be pretty much singularly... This use of reserves can be pretty much singularly related to a couple of issues. One of the most important issue is the loss of a significant sales taxpayer for dealership business due to a closure. So as we know, that dealership is no longer in town, it no longer operates. And as a result of that, it's close to about four hundred thousand dollars in ongoing sales tax funding that was the part of the city's budget year after year after year that is immediately gone. Okay? So nothing has replaced that. So that goes right to the bottom line and it makes up a lot of that one point two million dollar deficit. You also have just under six hundred thousand dollars in one-time costs that are added to the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So I took this right out of the information that you saw about a month and a half ago, out of the schedules that I did see. And I have a list for you a little bit later on in the presentation. But those one-time additions, again, they're just for twenty-three, twenty-four. So they've been excluded in future years, okay? Many times when cities have very healthy reserves, you have a high level of deferred maintenance, you have huge capital needs, there's things that you want to do, that's what you have the reserve for sometimes, okay? It's for one-time things, okay? You should never use a reserve for ongoing things, okay? Where you've got to pay for them year after year after year. But you can use a reserve for one-time things, but more importantly, you want to make sure you have a reserve set aside for the things that you don't know that will come up, you know, catastrophic events, economic events, et cetera. What you're experiencing with the loss of a sales taxpayer, in my opinion, is an economic event, okay? It's an overnight event that transpired. It's why you have a reserve. You have a reserve set aside to enable your city council to have the time. It gives you the time that you need to decide exactly where you want to move forward without impacting services of the community overnight, where you got to make cuts right away or you have to do something different right away. That's what the reserve is a backstop for, and that's kind of what you're using it for in the context of this budget that's already been presented. Nonetheless, when you take that sales tax loss and you take the one-time additions, that in and of itself is about nine hundred thousand dollars, okay? That's quite a bit of money, nine hundred thousand to a million dollars. The other two hundred thousand, I'll weigh in a little bit on that now. And that is, the way this budget is built, that five point nine seven million dollars in expenditures in the general fund assumes that all your positions, okay, citywide are allocated and authorized, are filled for the entirety of the year. We know many times that's not practical. In fact, when I put this budget together, I knew there were two vacant positions, your finance director position and also you had a police officer position that had not been filled, okay? Those positions in and of themselves as a cost to the general fund are two hundred thousand dollars. So if you kept those vacant for the entirety of the year and you did not backstop what was provided by those positions with overtime, with consultant fees, with something else, then you're going to accrue that savings. Chances are you're going to accrue some level of savings to the bottom line. So I'll call that the other two hundred thousand dollars in that one point two million dollar mix. So if you kept those positions vacant, you didn't have a sales tax loss and you didn't have any one-time stuff going on in your general fund, chances are you'd have a balanced budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. Next slide, please. Looking specifically at your revenues, you can see the four point seven million dollars in revenues made up of a variety of categories. However, eighty percent of all those revenues comes from one type of source, which is taxes. So just under four million dollars comes from taxes. And then you receive the array of other revenues that you receive. Some are fees that offset regulatory type things like building permits or planning and zoning permits, fines and forfeitures, those sorts of things. But nonetheless, any monies that are received in the general fund can pretty much be used for any purpose, okay? Which is why the general fund is the fund that your council has at its discretion to do pretty much anything you want to do with, okay? With the revenues that are received. So four point seven million dollars, again, twenty percent comes from all those other little sources, not a whole lot is coming in there, but taxes is huge. And on the next slide, you'll see what those taxes are. So that three point eight million dollars in taxes, the majority of that is property taxes, about forty-eight percent of all the revenues comes from property taxes. And then sales taxes, just over a million dollars there. That used to be one point four million, okay? So now it's just one.
Sorry to interrupt you, but your pie chart of forty-eight point four percent doesn't accurately represent the depiction on the chart for property tax because it looks more like sixty percent in property taxes. Am I seeing that wrong?
Seventy percent of all the tax revenues are from sales tax and property tax.
Thank you.
And then you can see the other types of smaller taxes. You have, I think you have one hotel or motel in town.
I'm sorry, go back. So I'm looking at your note in the bottom, it says property tax is forty-eight point four percent of all revenues?
I think it should say of tax revenues.
Okay, okay.
Just a three point, three point eight million, so...
So if this, if this...
Three point three divided by three point eight, if that's forty-eight, then it's...
Okay, so the whole pie chart is our...
Just taxes.
Just taxes.
Just taxes. So if you, can you go back one slide? So the three point eight is that blue portion in this slide right here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what I've done, given that this, the biggest portion of all the revenues we're receiving the general fund, which this slide depicts, is three point eight million on the next slide, I then take that blue portion and break, go ahead one more, and break that out specifically. So this is the, this is everything in the blue slice of the pie on the previous.
Forty-eight percent.
Just taxes.
Forty-eight percent.
Yeah, yeah.
This would be eighty percent. I'm sorry, it could just be me and I'm having difficulty reading it, so if you can bear with me. So I'm seeing at the bottom, property tax forty-eight point four percent of all revenues, sales tax twenty-two point one.
Instead of all revenues, it should say taxes revenue.
So we're not talking fees and licenses?
Actually, no, you know what? No, it's not. It's all revenues, yeah. So forty-eight percent of all your revenues is from property taxes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then so...
Citywide or general fund.
And then so this whole chart represents our revenue?
Not our revenue.
Only the taxes?
Yeah.
Taxes and fees?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you for helping me to see that.
Okay, no problem. But what I wanted to show here is that out of the taxes that you receive, which is the largest component of the general fund that you receive in front of revenue, sales taxes and property taxes make up the majority of that. And then you receive some other smaller portions, the largest of which is franchise fees for things like cable, garbage and those sorts of things, communications fees. And then from there, Prop one seventy-two, which can only be used for public safety purposes, and the business license fifty-six thousand. So again, not a whole lot of flexibility in the other taxes. Sales taxes and property taxes are where you get the biggest bang for your buck in terms of the general fund revenues for all revenues in the general fund. Go to the next slide. Looking at the general fund revenues for twenty-three, twenty-four, just to give you an idea of the assumptions that have been used to develop the budget. And then what I did is I actually went in and confirmed these and then more importantly, parlayed these into the future for future forecast numbers that you'll see in just a little bit. So the increase in property taxes from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four is assumed at four percent. Think that's probably a pretty prudent number. I have not seen anything come out of the San Joaquin County assessor's office yet in terms of the assessed valuation growth for your county yet, particularly for your city. I just checked today also. But once that comes out, we'll have a really good idea of exactly what your secured growth will be in your assessed valuation and we'll fix that.
Good question for Andy. Are you, so is that four percent you're assuming is inflation or are you assuming that there is no recession that happens?
So that four percent assumes a couple of things, okay? It assumes, it's looking back on what your growth has been in the last few years.
Yeah.
Okay? And it's been more than the Prop thirteen limit of two percent. Typically, in a town that does not have a lot of growth, okay? And I have not come to that conclusion here yet because I haven't looked at the numbers. But typically in towns that don't have a lot of growth, the only way you're going to get more than the two percent in the secured valuation growth is if you have what is called something on your, I think it's called the Prop eight rule, okay? And what the Prop eight rule is, is in periods where you have a recession, like in two thousand seven, eight and nine, you may recall that property values came way down, okay? And when property values come way down, the sales taxes cities collect also come way down, okay? Because people pay less in taxes. Well, the Prop eight kicks in by keeping your former base, okay? So if you had a home that was worth a hundred and you were assessed at a hundred and it dropped down to seventy and you started paying taxes on seventy thousand instead of a hundred thousand, the assessor can grow that thirty thousand back at his discretion, consistent with what he believes values are, okay? You're not limited to two percent each year anymore. That Prop eight value sticks. More importantly, you still get the two percent if you have a CPI of two percent each year, at least a CPI of two percent each year. So what most cities in California, and I have yet to see one that hasn't had it, have going on when they have more than two percent and they're very limited growth in their in their communities, meaning not a lot of new homes are being built and there's not a lot of that going on, reassessments, is you have that Prop eight returning, okay? Now it's starting to dwindle.
So you're saying conceivably unless it drops more than thirty percent?
Yeah.
That it stays at four percent?
Right.
So if the property values, say hypothetically drop fifty percent, then that'll be twenty, sixteen percent, like twenty minus, okay?
So we'll be watching that. So I think four percent is a conservative number. But once it comes out, I will update the budget and get the right number in there, you know, so that you have that. Just because it's a million bucks that is in your general fund and coming into your general fund out of the five million. Sales taxes are adjusted consistent with the forecast provided by mini services, I mentioned that. I have included.
Andy, can I ask you one more question? I apologize, I just want to get clarity to is, so you're saying that the assessor has the ability to fudge these numbers essentially thirty percent? That's, so the taxpayer essentially gets hosed, is what you're saying in that scenario? Is there any extra printing of money that occurs with that?
Any other?
Extra printing of money that occurs with that?
Total money.
Like the government itself kicks in the printing press to make up for the difference? Or is this just a perceived value?
You know, I don't know. I think every assessor is different.
Okay.
And I know, for example, my home was in Placer County, Auburn. And in Placer County, my, the assessed valuation of my home went from five hundred thousand down to three hundred and some thousand.
Okay.
Okay, significant.
Yeah, big change, yeah.
Significant, but...
Two thousand eight.
Once the recession was over, it came flying back.
Gotcha.
Okay, flying back to the point where a lot of communities in Placer County, whether it be Auburn, Rockland, Roseville, Placer County Incorporated, they were seeing eight, nine percent growth in their secured valuation every year.
Gotcha.
For a number of years. That's just what it was. And that's because it came way down and then demand, it demands out there, the assessor has every right to bring it back up to the base.
So you're saying essentially that our assessor, whoever that is, is pretty ethical at this point?
But then I've worked in other counties or I've worked with cities in other counties where virtually nothing was done.
Yeah.
Nothing, yeah. So it just, it just depends on the county.
Appreciate that clarity. Thank you.
And I don't, this is the first city I've had in San Joaquin County, so I'm still learning a little bit about the county, so...
I think you can request a reassessment as well in an economic downturn. So if it did happen, then you'd be able to request a reassessment and they'd get a new appraised value, yeah.
Sounds... I've also included the remaining, just under seventy-two thousand dollars in ARPA funding that was earmarked for the general fund. And this is just based on a schedule that I received. So that is in on the source side as one-time funding for general government expenditures. Conservative increases are built into the general fund sources consistent with historical trends, so I did mention that for all the, you know, smaller revenues, if they've grown in the past, I grow them a little bit in the future as well. And then you have two transfers in, coming in from other funds. You have eighty thousand five hundred dollars coming in from the supplemental law enforcement fund, which is money that's received pursuant to a cops grant that most jurisdictions with police activities get. You receive anywhere between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year and then you move about half of that, what looks like half of that every year into your general fund to help offset police expenditures, which are fully borne by the general fund. The remaining money in the police fund, which I have not put together yet as part of your budget, is there for things that come up that basically offset what would otherwise be a cost to the general fund for things like cars, replacement, large ticket items that pretty much is at the purview of the police chief and the police department. Traffic safety fund also transfers in twenty thousand dollars every year. So that is a, an ongoing transfer that also comes in. Next slide, please. Moving over to the expenditures, you can see about six million dollars in expenditures. And again, this does include that six hundred thousand dollars in those one times. So these numbers are, include all those one-time costs. So that five point nine million dollars, you can see the largest department is your police department. And then you have an array of other services that the city does provide, planning, building, streets, code enforcement, street lighting, animal control, recreation parks, community center, corporate art, management and support. I mean, all of these things are things that the city has to do to maintain delivering services to the community. One thing I do want to mention is that these amounts also include a portion of what your city calls cost center transfers and management and legislative transfers, okay? Management support transfers. And those are for costs for things like insurance, your legislative, which would include your body and other staff that are assigned to the legislative component, management and support, your corporate art, civic center and the civic center, all of which provide a function that is a citywide function, okay? And because it's a citywide function and what we do here and what management does and what your civic center provides actually supports the city as a whole, if you have a methodology set up to actually distribute those costs, you can do that. And your city has done that in the past. So you distribute all those costs to the general fund and your general fund, of that two point two million dollars in all those costs combined for those things, your general fund keeps about fifty-one percent. The other forty-nine percent and there, and those, that fifty-one percent is embedded in those numbers that you see on this, on this pie chart. The other forty-nine percent goes to other funds, particularly your enterprise funds, which would be your water, sewer, stormwater, transit, those sorts of things. So everybody pays their fair share for citywide services that are provided. So I just wanted to point that out. Next slide, please. From a staffing resource perspective, so these are your staff members that are authorized that I mentioned. So there's thirty-six point eight five FTE and that stands for full-time equivalents. The point eight five comes into play, I think you have a sixty percent administrative part-time person in your police department. And then you also have a twenty-five percent transit manager that manages your transit program. And then you have thirty-six full-time positions. So those thirty-six full-time positions aren't just charged to one department. They're split up. Everybody's got a different, different charge methodology, okay? And I haven't fully analyzed that yet, but I want to to make sure that it's pretty consistent with what it should be. But you can see here where all those positions are charged. So your court yard is getting one point eight total FTE. And that might make up four different people, point six of this person, point three of this person, you know, those sorts of things. So, but nonetheless, twenty-nine point two five of your total thirty-six point eight five positions are charged to the general fund. Now keep in mind that of those general fund positions, for those people that actually work in a legislative, you guys, because you're in there, management, support, those sorts of things, they're actually allocated out to the general fund and to the other funds. So out of that three point six million dollar total general fund cost for personnel, one point, just over one, under one point one million dollars is allocated out, okay?
Can we go back one slide, please? You have a question?
Maybe, three, four, zero. Can we go forward one slide? So on that previous slide, it said police expenditure was three million, three hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and fifty-three. I'm assuming that's staffing as well as equipment, things that they need. And then here I'm seeing total staffing resource cost of three million...
And then here I'm seeing total staffing resource cost of three million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine, which is a three hundred thousand dollar difference. My layman's mind says that for all of those other positions, minus the fourteen point six for police, we're, we're only spending three hundred thousand dollars roughly, which just seems like a low number to me. Could be reading it wrong, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so the, uh, these are fully loaded costs, okay, for staff. So all of these staff costs are not just the costs of the position that you, that you pay. It's for things like health benefits, it's for things like life insurance, things like workers' comp. It's for things like your calpers, uh, not only the normal cost, but the unfunded liability costs as well. Uh, so that's, sometimes that can be a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
All of those costs are built into that three point six million dollars.
Can I just like see the slide before real quick? Got it. And, and you're seeing why three point six doesn't add to five point nine, is that?
My, my question?
Yeah.
No, I, I was. The numbers just didn't really make sense. I, I guess kind of what he, he said to me, I, I was thinking that the three hundred thousand dollar difference between what I'm seeing was low. It doesn't seem like it would have been enough to support staff and all of the expenditures that go along with it, with holdings, uh, our portion at least, uh, calpers, um.
Oh, I'm trying to.
Work and stuff, those types of things.
Yeah, this is the, this is the fully loaded.
This number here.
Three, three point three million, uh, no, that's everything.
Everything.
Five point nine.
That's the difference.
Yeah, the, the, the pie chart, the five point nine is more, is everything.
Got it.
Materials, supplies, capital.
Yes, yeah. And that's, that, that's where I was.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, understanding.
And the next one is, I, I just, it just talks about staff.
Yeah, that's.
Staffing.
Yeah.
Equi- equipment, trainings, all, all the other things that are associated.
Yeah, that, I, I see it now, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
All right, moving on?
Got it.
Okay, all right, next slide please. Okay, so general fund expenditures for fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four. So again, full staffing is assumed for all authorized positions for the, all authorized positions for the entirety of the year. So the numbers you're seeing here actually assume every position is filled from July first, twenty-twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Okay, all, the whole year. Um, these numbers do include, uh, negotiated and approved salary increases. So any salary increases that have been negotiated and approved by your city council, um, are included not only in the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, but if you have approved raises for next year as well, those are in the model. Okay, so they're in the forecast. Uh, it includes funding for debt service, uh, which in your general fund, uh, only includes that service for your civic center and your energy lease, just, uh, under three hundred and nine thousand there. Uh, it assumes contracting out of your animal services function. Um, and I saw that go from twenty-twenty-one where you had staff in there, uh, basically become no staff in twenty-three, twenty-four. So three years later, uh, you contracted that function out. Uh, it includes one-time expenditures, uh, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred, that's on the next slide, we'll get there in a minute. Uh, it includes conservative estimates for increases to regularly occurring expenditures, uh, for materials, supplies, contracts, fuel, et cetera, recognizing that all costs for all things, especially today, in our era of continued inflation, uh, continue to rise. Um, heard that today with construction costs. Um, it includes distribution of cost center, um, and general government charges consistent with the cost allocation methodology. So as I mentioned, uh, in whatever city has done in the past to distribute those charges, I've carried that forward for right now. Again, I think we need to analyze that because there may be some opportunity there to defray additional costs out of the general fund potentially. Next slide. When you look at your one-time costs, uh, for twenty-three, twenty-four, that are preliminarily built into the budget, uh, you can see that five hundred and sixty-two thousand, uh, just hit some of the big ones here. So in police, we have some, uh, radio upgrades, sixty-five thousand, uh, vehicle, a rim server and a desktop, hundred and thirty-three thousand. Uh, we have a housing element and ordinance update, which I'm told must happen, uh, for a hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, ninety thousand for two truck replacements in the streets fund, I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. Uh, AC unit at the community center, um, to the extent the community center is used, um, I highly recommend that, uh, so that people will continue to go there. Uh, ice machine and equipment, fifteen thousand there. Uh, but coming back to, um, the, uh, vehicles, uh, two truck replacements in the streets, uh, one thing I'm looking at as well is the very high balance, um, and I have not put this fund together yet either, um, but I've looked at it. Uh, the very high balance of funding that you have in your gas tax fund. Uh, you've got one point two million dollars in your gas tax fund, um, and that's a lot. That's a lot of money compared to what you receive. Uh, working with the city manager earlier today, I think we identified just under six hundred thousand of that or just under half of that is related to SB one, which is your road maintenance and rehabilitation act money that you receive pursuant to SB one, that you have to use for road maintenance, okay? You can't use it for any other purpose, all right? Have to identify the projects that you, that you're gonna, uh, do with it and then you have to do those projects, uh, consistent with what you're telling the state. Having said that, there's still six hundred thousand dollars in fund balance in your gas tax fund. To keep the SB one money coming in, which is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, I think, uh, that comes in, okay? You have to spend what's called an MOE, a maintenance of effort, out of your general fund, consistent with what happened a decade ago, for a three-year average, on how much you were spending out of your general fund for streets purposes, okay? So SB one came in and said, look, we know you're spending, well, I'm gonna make up a number, three hundred thousand dollars a year in the general fund in, in, uh, for streets. We don't want you to now get this new SB one money and tr- and take money and save money in your general fund. You need to keep doing that, okay? And you need to do something more with this SB one money, okay? So that's called a maintenance of effort. So you've gotta keep that maintenance of effort in your general fund at about three hundred thousand dollars. What I've done is I've looked at your budget for twenty-three, twenty-four and right now you're spending about five hundred thousand dollars in streets money, street-related money, including the ninety thousand for these two trucks. So one thing I'm gonna work on with the city manager before the budget comes back to you in its entirety is actually truing all that up and seeing how much we can actually take out of the general fund and put into the gas tax fund to not have to have one point two million dollars in a deficit, but maybe something less than that. And hopefully, the gas tax fund will be sustainable into the future as well, okay? So you're not compromising anything there. But it sure looks like you could do a lot with your gas tax fund, from my perspective. So you've got some good money there.
A good opportunity.
Yeah. Looking at everything. Okay, next slide please. Okay, so now we get into the forecast. Uh, so the forecast is, again, created as a tool to develop a better understanding of a baseline general fund funding requirements, provided defined level of ongoing services. So let me stop there for a minute. When I talk about a baseline budget, I'm talking about what it would take to provide a level of service consistent with something. That something is your twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So when you strip out all of the one-time revenues and one-time expenditures from your twenty-three, twenty-four budget and you're left with the thirty-six point eight-five positions, uh, that we talked about, you're left with the money that you need for materials, supplies, fuel, contract, et cetera. Um, and you assume that you continue to spend that because your council has approved a budget that delivers a level of service that, consistent with the budget and the appropriation that you, appropriations that you have authorized, assumes that you need those appropriations to provide that level of service. So what the forecast does is it assumes that level of service all into the future. And it builds in certain assumptions, whether it be revenue, uh, for revenues that might increase, sales tax goes up, hopefully. Uh, property tax values go up and other revenues might go up as well, but expenditures also increase. Okay, labor costs go up, calpers costs might go up, fuel goes up, all these things. So this forecast actually has an assumption table for all five years in the future and you can put in different percentages in all these types of things, okay? And, and you'll see this someday. Um, but, so I've just been conservative, I'm conservative on the revenue side and I'm conservative on the expenditure side, meaning I'm not overestimating revenues and I'm not underestimating expenditures, where I think they're gonna be. I've looked at your PERS actuary tables, I know what PERS is saying that your UAL payments will be into the future. I'm at least from an actuarial perspective and I've built all that in. So this baseline service is your twenty-three, twenty-four budget, um, as you've defined it already, all right? But we're looking at annual revenue expenditure changes over a multi-year horizon, uh, based on those conservative assumptions, looking at significant cost drivers, um, like the PERS costs, um, and then, um, increased share of discretionary revenues, property taxes, et cetera. And then only putting in known one-time revenues and expenditures in the future if we know we're gonna get them, okay? If it's just a one-time for this year, I've taken it out in twenty-four, twenty-five, all right? And again, that twenty-three, twenty-four budget is your base budget. Taking all that into account, this is what your forecast looks like, okay? So you can see the, uh, three years finished, um, you had a, in twenty-twenty-one, um, and it's, this is right out of your audit, uh, it's been completed. Uh, you used about a hundred and sixty-two thousand in reserves, um, and that could have been because of the, uh, onset of COVID and just different things going on, whatever. Then you save money, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, and that is most likely because of COVID, because a lot of places weren't spending money, okay? And there was just not a lot going on. Um, but taxes continue to come in and that's what we found from, from COVID. Sales taxes really didn't diminish at all, okay? And also they went down, but not, not to the extent they thought they were gonna go and the property taxes didn't go down, they actually went up. Um, and then in the year just finished, I'm anticipating that we're pretty close to balanced, okay? So I'm anticipating right now, the numbers I'm seeing use of about thirty-three thousand dollars in reserves, so pretty close to being balanced. Then you see the one point two million dollar budget that's before you, um, uh, for twenty-three, twenty-four. And then you see sustained negative numbers after that. Those negative numbers are only sustained because of pretty much one thing, okay? And that's the loss of four hundred thousand dollars in sales tax every year. And when you grow that sales tax, it, it gets, it exacerbates itself, okay? Um, in addition, keep in mind that for twenty-four, twenty-five, all the way through twenty, it should be twenty-eight, twenty-nine, not seven, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, um, you actually have, um, uh, the full staffing, uh, assumed, okay? So if you, again, if you didn't fill positions, those numbers would be lower, it wouldn't be that high. So there is a systemic issue and I'm, I'm gonna pin it on the fact that you had an economic issue transpire, um, in the last six months with the loss of the board dealership, okay? Just something that's gonna need to absolutely, absolutely be dealt with in the future, okay? Um, all right, next slide please. To the extent, uh, you can, you realize all of those deficits every year, um, and you, uh, built, and you built that into what your reserves ultimately look like, uh, you can see in twenty-three, twenty-four, um, or actually in, at twenty-two, twenty-three, you're ending with about four point four four million in general fund reserves, okay? That four point four four million is made up of your thirty-three percent policy reserve, uh, which is a policy that you have to set aside thirty-three percent of your expenditure base in your general fund, um, into an assigned reserve. That's what the blue bar represents. And then whatever's left is that orange portion of the bar, okay? And that's unassigned, meaning it's unobligated, it's not set aside really for anything. Um, you can see that if you use those reserves on the previous slide each year in the forecast, that orange bar gets lower and lower to the point where, starting in twenty-six, twenty-seven, that orange bar falls below zero and you're now using the amount of that orange bar out of the blue bar, okay? So, um, obviously you don't wanna do that. And I will tell you that that is the most powerful thing about preparing a forecast the way it's been done for you. You now have a tool to show you exactly what the ramifications are of anything you wanna do in your general fund, whether it's costs of staffing, whether it's changing staffing allocations, whether it's, uh, you know, providing raises, whether it's changing revenue, uh, revenues, if you wanted to, you know, grow revenue somehow, whether it be, uh, some, some new revenue, sales tax or something else, whether it be, uh, lowering expenditure, whether it be looking at an individual expenditure, like a contractual cost or a professional services cost or something, you can, all of that, individually by line item is in this forecast, okay? So, and once you start making changes, all this changes on the, on the flag, it's all automatic, okay?
Am I reading that correctly and the, the lot, between the last slide, slide and this side, so by fiscal year twenty-nine, thirty, we're bankrupt?
Uh, might be, close, pretty, yeah, you still had, I know you still had reserves in twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
So to, and coming into twenty-nine, thirty is where I see it.
Yeah, the, can you go back one slide? Um, so you, you can see that your loss is getting systemically less, um, with each year, um, meaning the revenue growth is hu- is greater than the expenditure growth. But in twenty-five, twenty-six and beyond, there are no salary increases built in to these numbers yet, okay? Cause that's one thing I don't like to get ahead of the city council in determining or guessing what salary increases might be or should be when putting these models together. You have to know whether or not you're sustainable with what you have today for what it costs today, okay? And the things, you know, you pretty much can't control. You can control salaries, you can't control fuel, you can't control materials, you can't control inflation, you can't control those, the calpers, okay? So that's why I set this thing up the way I do. Okay, uh, go forward two slides. Okay, so now we'll quickly move into the water fund. So for the water fund, five point three million in revenue, uh, six point five million in expenditures. Uh, again, you're using about one point two million dollars in fund balance, or what I call working capital in your water fund. Uh, call it working capital in the enterprise funds only because typically your rate base is set up to accommodate the funding of working capital, to take care of the capital projects, um, that, that you know have to be done to continue to comply with your permit requirements, okay? Uh, to keep those plants, uh, moving and going. That one point one, uh, that one point two million dollars, uh, budgeted use of working capital is only due to the fact that you have a three point five million dollar capital program that is in the water fund for next year, okay? So there's three point five million dollars worth of capital built in there. If you didn't have any capital built in, then you'd have a two point three million dollar surplus, okay? But again, the rate base in all your enterprise funds is set so that you can accommodate future capital projects, which you know you have to do, uh, to, to remain compliant with your permits. Uh, next slide please. Uh, this is kinda what there, you have five, six different funds in your water fund. Um, and once I'm done with all of your enterprise funds, I'm gonna look at potentially combining all of these funds into one fund, um, which, which would make it a little bit more transparent on what's going on because you've got a lot of transfers going in and out of wat- from one water fund to another water fund and, and just, and it really skews the numbers, uh, when you have that. Um, not, not, not in a bad way, it ju- it just doesn't make them completely transparent. So most of the cities that I've worked with, um, have, at the most, two funds. They have an operating fund and a capital fund, okay? But the majority of them have one fund with all that in it. And you just delineate what it is in the schedule and it's pretty easy. Um, so I'm gonna look at that, uh, potentially, um, but again, you can see here, um, at the end of the day, assuming we bring in the revenue, uh, which would include rate money and then there's also some, um, loan proceeds, uh, for project that we talked about, um, earlier. Um, the unreserved fund balance at the end of the day will still be five million dollars. And this is why, uh, we talked about, well, we'll get to that in a minute. But, uh, for revenues, uh, rate payer fees, about two million dollars there. Uh, the loan proceeds, one point three million, that's for your well-wanted design. Uh, you have the sale of water, uh, associated with Tracy, uh, a hundred and four thousand there and then investment earnings, forty thousand, in the next slide. The only thing that's different here is just the expenditures at the bottom, so you can see your, uh, direct personnel costs, uh, to the water funds are four hundred and fourteen thousand. The water fund does receive a cost distribution, uh, of the, of about three hundred and sixty thousand. Capital projects there for three point four. Uh, debt service, uh, pretty low right now, a hundred and thirty-four thousand. And then electricity round out the largest expenditures at a hundred and twenty-five. Next slide. These are your three-point-four million dollars in capital projects. You have a remote system, the well-one A, which is a two-point-five that was actually amended tonight to use a portion of that five million dollars in fund balance that we're anticipating by the end of the year, assuming we do everything in twenty-three, twenty-four, to offset a portion of that, to the extent that the loan can be bigger. Typically, you can, you know, work with the SRF or the state to get a lower loan, or potentially USDA, maybe. So we'll see if we can get that lower, or get additional loan funds at a lower rate. Distribution maintenance, a hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, and then your water line replacement, six-hundred-and-eight thousand. And then just to note there, the well-one A design project budget may exceed the amount initially budgeted, which we found out. Water fund budget for twenty-three, twenty-four will be updated and presented with the balance of the citywide budget at future date. So once we know exactly what it is, we're gonna build that in. Next slide. So total water fund, fund balance, or working capital at June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, five million dollars. And again, this doesn't include the million dollars that potentially went out tonight for the added cost to that. So about four million. And then the next slide is budget development, next steps. So the goal is now to actually go back and complete all the other funds in the city. The hardest one is always the general fund, and that one took a little bit longer just because we did the forecast and we put the model together. That's gonna be very important for your future. And then also putting together the initial enterprise fund, which is the water fund. And now I've finished, close to finishing the sewer fund. And then hopefully, if not in two weeks, you know, four weeks at the most, bring back everything to you in a package that will include all funds and a few different schedules you haven't seen yet that'll look at a citywide perspective and different things, and just give you something that you can actually consider and potentially vote on for twenty-three, twenty-four. So we're getting there, and I'm learning a lot, you know, about the city as I'm seeing opportunities that may exist for your fiscal health and fiscal future. So just keep plugging away and doing that. So with that, I will stop. No staff is here to answer any questions you might have, particularly that might have to do with their departments, but I'll stop there. Right back to you.
I'll start off with a great presentation, thank you. Jump into questions for anybody here.
We just piggyback on what he just said. Good job, and very thorough, and that's kinda what I was looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any specific questions up here on council with anything we haven't addressed as we went along?
Yes.
Please, Mr. Engle, what you got?
Not necessarily to question your credibility, but I have questions. Number one, how were your services obtained?
How were what?
How were you obtained by us as a city to prepare these documents?
Was I retained?
Yes.
I think your legal firm made a recommendation to your city manager.
Recommendation to our legal firm?
Because I also do work for the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District, and I have for four or five years.
A recommendation from the lawyer. You seem to be knowledgeable in your field. How many of these forecasts have you prepared? Not necessarily in your career, let's call it in the...
At least twenty.
Near, at least twenty.
And I can give you a list of all the cities.
No, I'm gonna take your word for it.
All over California.
It's all on record here, right?
San Bernardino, Mona, to...
So of those, when you see a city in the situation that you've just presented to us, how many times did that forecast come to fruition? And to kinda piggyback on that question, when you found this and other cities potentially saw an ability to react, what timeline was needed for a city to react in order to correct that? 'Cause for lack of a better term, and I'm sorry if I offend anybody, but you pissed in my Wheaties, right? You told me essentially that our town's gonna be broken six and a half, seven years, and that's very concerning to me. So obviously, we have to come up with some solutions, but from your experience, please.
That's a good question, and I'm actually glad you asked it, because that's why I do this forecast, okay? I don't want it to come to fruition, all right? Especially when you have the negative numbers, all right? I try to really, and I've done enough of these where I think I know what I need to look at, and I know how to present it in such a way where if someone wants to open up the model and look at the numbers and go into it and dig into it, I want people to blow holes in my model, okay? Especially when there's a lot of red numbers, and I want people to tell me where it might be not right. And that's why I tell you everything you need to know about what's going in to the assumptions in building this model, whether it's the revenue growth, whether it's all positions being filled, because frankly, some of the cities that I've done this for have wanted me to build in salary savings. Some of the larger cities where they know, Andy, you know, we're not gonna fill all seven-hundred positions in the city. You need to build in four percent salary savings for each department. So I put a credit in there, you know, for that number. And they, but they know that, and they're working with that. You know, one thing I haven't done is for you is typically do a two- or three-page synopsis of everything that tells you exactly how the model was prepared. And I'll still do that for you, okay? Just so you know all the assumptions, what to look for, what opportunities may exist. Because that's where a lot of times, if there's red numbers, cities... I started doing these because of the CalPERS issue, okay? A lot of cities were having a huge, huge problem with rising CalPERS unfunded liability costs. They were out of control, okay? CalPERS wasn't meeting their discount rate, UALs kept growing year after year after year, okay? And cities had a huge problem. A lot of cities used a model I prepared to back into doing a pension obligation bond, okay? And there were four cities that I've worked with that have done that, okay? That have used a model as something that demonstrates what a pension obligation bond would do for them to save them money in the future. And it does that. Today, pension obligation bonds aren't something you wanna do because interest rates are way too high, okay? But before interest rates started going up, POBs were something to consider, and Stanislaus actually did one, okay? And they have a very... When I first did their model, it wasn't good, okay? It wasn't good. They had other organizations that were part of their, part of their jurisdiction that are no longer there. They had a lot of staff, they had staff issues, all these things, okay? And there was just not a lot of continuity, but they made decisions, okay? And they did the right thing, and today, their model's in the black. You know, they have a sustainable organization.
How long did that take?
What's that?
How long did that take for them to go from that?
How long did it take? I'm gonna say about five years, five or six years, yeah. So, 'cause I've been, yeah, five years.
I'm not trying to beat you up here.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get an idea, wrap my head around where we are. It sounds like you've been fairly thorough on the presentation. I assume as we look for city council direction, part of a service that you'll be able to offer then are recommendations on how to correct this from a money-saving standpoint. Do you also, or will you also offer suggestions on increases in revenue sources? Or are you really looking at expenditures?
I can make recommendations, yes, based on what I've seen in the past and what other cities have done, yes.
We talked about that earlier today as a part of like the full package, when we bring everything, putting together recommendations for council on both sides.
And I've done that, but a couple of my cities have done the sales tax major deal.
I appreciate your presentation, thank you.
And it's not just, it's not just sales tax. Some, you know, some cities look at master fee study, okay? How much are we recovering on our permit fees? I mean, are we actually recovering? Typically, you don't recover a hundred percent ever, okay? I don't think I've ever seen a city that recovers a hundred percent of the costs in their fee structure. But there's a magical number that you should try to get to, and if you're below that magical number, you may wanna consider looking at your fee structure. I don't know, I haven't even touched that yet. And, or other things, rec fees. I mean, what's your rec program like here? I mean, is it robust, is it used? Would it be prudent to look at the fee structure for your rec fees? Just 'cause I know you've got a lot of rec programs, I've seen them in your budget. Everything can be looked at. And then on the expenditure side, you know, what is your mix of staff versus consultants? Or the other way around? And, you know, what sort of contracts do you have? What are you buying, who are you buying it from? Just, everything's on the table.
Thank you. Any other questions, your comments, or concerns here at the council level?
Just have a comment. And Andy, I appreciate the work that you've put together on this. I mean, it is definitely a big pill to swallow. But, and I can't speak for my other four council members, but as you go through this, I would like to request that, I mean, let's look at everything across the board. I don't know what previous councils have done, but this is a very deep dive, I think. And I don't know if a deep dive like this has ever been done before, quite honestly. And so...
And please keep in mind, council, that this, this issue exists for one reason, okay? And that is because of what happened in this town economically. It was huge, you lost your largest sales taxpayer.
A gentleman to your left better get crackalackin'.
And that, that's significant, okay? It's a significant change, okay? But it is why you have reserves, and it is why now you have a tool to show you if you didn't change anything, is what you're up against, okay? So you know out the gate, just with the economic issue that transpired, even without this model, you gotta do something, gotta do something, okay? So now you know how much time you have to do something. And that's where these models have helped other cities and city councils actually... Oh, okay, we're gonna get on this right now, we're gonna do it now. They don't wanna, they don't wanna deal with this.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I think the visual aids, I very much appreciate them. It's what we've been asking for for a while now, and I appreciate them, and I hope that our citizens appreciate them, 'cause now they can kinda see what's going on and what we need to do as a community as well, so appreciate your presentation.
Definitely appreciate the forecast model. I know I've seen multiple budgets, and I can't say that we've necessarily seen that far extended out to see where we might be in six, eight years timeframe, so much appreciated for that model that you put together for us.
Welcome.
Any questions out there in the audience or online?
May I just say as a common person, common resident, thank you. Exactly what a lot of us have been asking for, and you made it so that I could understand it, so thank you.
So those are my favorite comments, truly, truly.
It's the truth, so...
If we don't have concerns, comments, questions, or anything like that, then let's go ahead and move on to item number nine and discuss council manager goals for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four and provide directions to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. So this has been a work in progress here. At the August twenty-first meeting, we reviewed our twenty-two, twenty-three goals with council, which some of them are actually from the twenty-one, twenty-two goals that were listed. And then staff provided the PowerPoint at the last presentation or the last meeting where we reviewed other potential goals or items that the council has brought up in past meetings or as talking points during meetings, and those were all incorporated as potential items to consider. And then at the last council meeting, there were additional items that were brought for future discussion, and those were adopting a strategic plan, actually applying it as one of the goals for this next fiscal year, exploring various revenue stream options, improving communications with the community, and then prioritizing sidewalk improvements on streets surrounding schools, which I included the ones that were listed, Dent, Mitchell, Brighton, Yosemite, et cetera. And then another item that was brought up, which I didn't see any direction, it was just a, it was just said that, you know, instead of, you know, putting priority towards code enforcement, that it move into a different area and other items were listed, but we didn't specifically say to remove that item. And so it's still listed on there, and whether or not council wants to continue with that item, which was from the twenty-two, twenty-three increased efforts to address code enforcement requests. It wasn't specifically said to be removed, but it wasn't continued either. So I'm just pointing that out because it was something I wasn't sure how to sum up, really. So I'm just putting that out there. But those were the items that were discussed at the last meeting. So I don't know if you want to discuss these items in more detail, if you have additional goals that you wanted to add to this. These would be for the twenty-three, twenty-four.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt, you apologize.
No problem.
So this increased efforts to address code enforcement requests, I guess the devil's in the details on that, like, if you read it, are you talking about trying to target citizens, you know what I'm saying? Like specifically looking for loopholes to get fees?
No, no, we don't.
Like to just, when someone calls in, to go out to that spot more often? You know what I'm saying, like?
Yeah, so my understanding of it at that time was the city currently operates on a complaint basis, and I think at that time, there was interest in not necessarily operating in that fashion where there are specific items where we would move forward with addressing them if they were prioritized by the council as something that, like in the past, we've talked about public health and safety issues. Don't need to be on a complaint basis if staff or police department or the public works department recognizes a code enforcement issue that can be identified as a public health and safety issue to go ahead and move forward with that, which we currently do. But I think in the past, there was some interest in trying to be a little bit more proactive with it as opposed to reactive to it.
I mean, as long as, I don't know, I think there's a slippery slope there.
And that's totally up to council whether they wanna do that.
At least on, but...
We also at that time had a few, and this was with the prior council, we also had a few specific code enforcement cases that were going on at that time that were uninhabitable dwellings that we were having to move forward on. And I think that basically kinda played into trying to increase our efforts because those specific code enforcement cases took up so much time and effort, which upfront, when it comes to code enforcement, it's something that the city pays for out in advance, and then basically has to file a lien or file on the tax assessor.
Yes, I guess what I'm getting at, as long as, my opinion on the council side of this would be as long as we're not looking for problems.
Yeah, I mean, and we haven't operated that way.
There's a problem, and then like, I'm looking for something to be ticky-tacky about.
Yeah, no, we don't have the staffing for that, that level at this point in time.
I'm not sure, based on budget, we should be looking to fulfill that position. It's not our money generator, per se.
Yes, yeah, and it wasn't so much the position, so much as efforts at that point in time. So if that's not the interest of this council, it doesn't have to be included.
I think status quo, we currently have with health and safety concerns, anybody can deal with that, plus the complaint-driven, I think that's been working.
Yeah, me too.
Without being an overreach of ticky-taggedness, which I would agree with. I don't need to be doing that, that's my feeling.
I feel the same way, I don't know how everyone else feels, but... I feel the same way. I don't know how everyone else feels, but.
I tend to agree that what we're doing right now is working, um, on the complaint basis. So I don't know if there is a need for increasing efforts to be part of the goals.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I ask Jalen a question.
Please.
So Jalen, we, we've been talking about the strategic plan. Um, and then similarly to that is the economic development planner slash roadmap. In your experience, do you see both of those items going hand in hand, working together where one complements the other? So do they need to be separate plans? Or can they, can the roadmap of the economic development plan be generated out of the strategic plan?
I'll give the, uh, the cop out answer and it, it really depends on you and, and what the council decides. Um, in my time here, I would say a strategic plan is wise, independent of an economic development roadmap. Um, but I definitely think they should be related and, and correlated closely. So in my mind, I think the strategic sl- plan is slightly out of head. You get some of that framework, um, established and you start to do the economic development roadmap.
Okay, a, a, and back to what was talked previously, I mean, I think Andy kind of opened our eyes. A, and I, I don't necessarily think that code, code enforcement is a small piece of the puzzle that we need to deal with. I think the much bigger fish that we have to fry are developing the strategic plan and, and at least pointing, starting the framework for the economic development plan.
Yeah, I mean, as, as Andy mentioned, you don't have something like, you know, what is it, a third? You know, close to a third of, of your sales tax leave in, you know, overnight. Um, so we as staff and, and through the council will definitely work on short-term, you know, economic development strategies to start filling some of that gap. But, you know, we'll also lurk, work on long-term economic development strategies to, you know, grow the overall base.
I mean, all these other ideas, they're, they're great ideas, but those are the big fish to fry in, in my opinion, right now.
I'd like to look at, as far as goals and expenditures focused, like I had mentioned in the prior meeting, exclusively on the infrastructure, water and sewer, and those other projects that are currently within the idea that we have monies coming in from other sources, whether it be S J cog, state money, whatever for the projects that are fully funded and not going to hit the general fund. And outside of that, we need to tighten the strings on any other spending myself. So whether we want to do this, that, or the other in all these bullet points, uh, if it's not specifically lined up with outside revenue, I don't think they should be even on the list to be concerned right now for this budget.
So Mayor, are you, so suggesting maybe to add in, into here somewhere like, um, uh, specific, uh, you know, bullet head efficiency, like looking for areas to.
Oh, definitely, yeah, we're obviously gonna, we want, you know.
The heading.
Clean up budget, that, that's the, the blunt, short way to put it.
Yeah, like maybe adding that.
Fix budget timeline.
I would also like to, to suggest, it's kind of on here a couple of times in different wording, but with Andy's assistance, um, consider alternative rev- revenue streams for the city moving forward.
So that's listed towards the bottom, uh, for number two, exploring various revenue stream options. But we also discussed in the previous item, um, exploring various expenditure stream options or tightening up expenditures. And so we can consolidate that into one item where we would be exploring various revenue and expenditure.
I'm good with that.
Options.
I am still interested in moving forward with the sales tax measure for November twenty-twenty-four election. I don't know if we need to put, I mean, if we need to put that as a goal to move forward on that, then I'd be interested in putting that on as a goal. But if it's included in this blanket statement, that would be fine as well.
This would be like the general statement and then as staff, we would look at that option as well as other options that we think that would fit that need and bring those to council.
I would really, I mean, um, Mayor Protem, he can brought this up way back when. But I just really want to thank him for pushing the idea of a strategic plan. Because that just now valid has been completely validated by the present, previous presentation by Andy. So I think that should be goal number one moving forward. So thank you, Andy. You, Andy, and thank you, Andy. Thank Andys.
I appreciate the kind words.
Uh, if I may, the, uh, not sure whether it falls under adopting a strategic plan or under economic development. And my statement that I'm about to make, uh, I am, I am all in favor of our low-growth ordinance. But it's my belief that we, we need to come up with a solid plan to fill all seventy-five of those permits every year for the next ten years. It's, it sounds like a lot of growth when you say it out loud, but it really isn't. If you average, what's the average person per home, three, three-point-two or three-point-three? Jalen, do you have that information?
Around there.
Roughly, we call it four even, for, for easy math, that's three thousand people over ten years, which is fifty percent of our population. But, uh, the income that that would bring in, uh, building and development fees, the revenue that's spent in town, the generation and creation of new businesses, uh, the funding that we would get based on the increase in our population, um, is not the answer to, to everything, like. But those, those monies are a quick shot every year into the funding that, that we need to continue to, to get the city to run. It's, it's not, I, I, I don't want to grow and grow up like any of our surrounding cities.
Two feet and a rim.
But two, two decades worth of not meeting those, those permit numbers, um, there's a reason for it. And we haven't been very friendly with, um, I think, few people wanting to come in to develop. It's just my opinion, and you can obviously disagree with me, but, um, it's a quick shot every year for the next ten years. And it does build some long-term income when we start looking at sales tax and, uh, property tax. And we all know property is continuing to go up, but if we looked at that large portion of where our income comes from, there is some monies that can come from there and the, and, and also hopefully increasing our population would entice businesses to, to start here. Or at least there would be more people here in town that could, had, or they, that had the opportunity to spend their money in our town, which would also generate income. So I mean, that, that would be my, like, only add. I think everything that we've talked about makes total sense. And, and I'm not sure, Jalen, can you clarify where that would go into the strategic plan or into the economic development plan?
I would say into the economic development roadmap.
Probably a portion of the housing element as well, to an extent.
And it's coming, right? Those, those homes are gonna, they're going to be built here, whether we find somebody to build them or whether the state or at some point the Fed comes in and says, you are building them and these are the people that you get.
Yeah, I'd have to re, I'd have to think that through before I'd ever completely agree with you.
Oh, I, I get it. It's a bold statement, man. I get it.
Well, I think, uh, there's not too many times I've disagreed with you. To be honest with you, but, um, and I don't, not saying I disagree completely, but when I look at, like, we've got time, we're in the fourth quarter, okay? It's not Hail Mary time, in, in my opinion, but it is time to think in a, you know, north-point posi- direction, so to speak. I think looking at all options, uh, and then making a decision, uh, from there is probably the best way forward. You know, obviously, sales, uh, tax, uh, with businesses being attracted here. Um, sales tax measures, um, looking at efficiencies. And then housing as needed. The concern with housing is, my understanding is it creates long-term infrastructure issues that once you get trapped in a growth model, yeah, can be as a real issue when you look at the towns around us. Um, so growing has to definitely be done in a very, very, um, you know, well-thought-out way if you're gonna do it.
I agree, and I think we've established those boundaries with past councils that we've limited. We've established our low-growth ordinance to seventy-five permits a year and we haven't been able to do that. And even through the MSR, um, that we did last year, year before, um.
It, it adopted earlier this year.
Uh, it, it showed, um, you know, just in that, that information that even what I'm proposing doesn't blow up our town. It doesn't turn us into Manteca. It doesn't turn us into Oakdale. I think it gives us a, a little bit of a competitive advantage to be able to recruit additional businesses. Um, to be able to do this one-twenty corridor plan that we're talking about, to be able to capture the, uh, the traffic. What, do you, do you know the traffic count per year, annual?
Is it? No.
Just roughly or per day?
I honestly don't know.
Um, I think I have it for summertime, which is very different than the rest of the year. Um, I think McKinney was, was at seven, seven to ten thousand. And I think one-twenty was more around ten thousand. But those traffic studies, specifically the one-on-one-twenty gets updated by Caltrans. And I don't believe they've had a, they've had a chance to update it. It keeps getting postponed.
Essentially, having, having that population, having additional people here willing to invest in our community, because it's a great community. And I think when people get here, they realize that and they would want to contribute. But to be able to stop some of that traffic on the one-twenty, direct it to our downtown. I mean, if we look at our surrounding towns, we're, we're, we're not gonna be able to compete with, uh, Oakdale's downtown or with the Riverbanks downtown or, or Mantica's. It's, it's just not the size, right? We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to capture some of that business. And yet we want to direct it that way, but there's not really much room to expand it. We're not gonna start tearing down houses and putting up a downtown, right? We want to leave it the way that it is, so in order to get some business somewhere, right? We don't want to do that, it's our face. Uh, we don't want to do that. So there, where, where's our opportunity? Our opportunities are on McKinney and one-twenty. And I mean, it's in here, we've recognized that as, as an opportunity, is the, uh, State Route one-twenty corridor plan. Um, I'm not saying that my idea is a fix-all. I, I, I would appreciate some consideration. I probably could go on with my argument all night and then I don't want to do that anymore, so, um.
No, I think, I think.
We can, we can agree to disagree.
I know, well, in the housing part, I don't disagree with the other stuff. I think finding, there's different types of businesses out there, businesses that don't need rooftops. And then there's businesses that do need rooftops. And then there are businesses that you can, excuse me, fake rooftops, tops, so to speak, because of thoroughfare, uh, traffic. Uh, and so I think it's important to identify those and what kind of revenue streams they can potentially bring to us. And then going after those types of businesses, uh, you know, more aggressively. Um, the housing part of it, I know is un- important, but I also know that, um, to me, it's like, you know, fourth quarter, throw it. Hopefully someone catches it.
I, I, I definitely agree with, with what you're saying. And even if we were to start to identify people right now, getting that, that income generated in our town is three to five years away. And from what I just saw, we're up to six, six and a half years away from having serious monetary issues.
And so I think we.
The housing element, uh.
I, I see what you're saying. Fills the gap while we, while we establish relationships.
The nice thing for this next twelve, eighteen months per se, we obviously now have, um, Mr. Sales project that was just approved for sixteen, eighteen units, albeit seniors. But we also have the property at Printin' one-twenty that's been in the back burner. Now the MSR is done, I believe they're still looking to move forward with that project in some form. Hopefully that has come up. Hopefully those two projects there, I think we're gonna see our seventy-five this year.
That'd be fantastic.
Give a good indication of what it might look like for one year and then we can extrapolate some of that action pretty quickly from those numbers.
No, I agree.
The influx of money and, and how that affected us and go from there. So I think we have a good trial run with that this year. I think we have some optimism that we're gonna hit that seventy-five this year, in my opinion.
Our growth management, um, ordinance has two periods, a primary and a secondary period. And so for your primary period, for allocations for building permits, the developer has to reach out in advance and submit for them by May first. And then we had updated a, um, a secondary period, um, where I believe we could take an additional twenty-five units um, for a total of a hundred if necessary, uh, if they're rollovers from the previous year. And those are due every November first. And so that's an item that you would get in advance because we would be reaching out to potential developers and letting them know, hey, you need to apply for your allocations for the year. If you plan on building in this six-month period, you need to apply by May first. If you plan on building in this period, you need to apply by November first. It's specific in our growth management procedures.
What else do we need for recommendations or is this, uh?
So this was the listing. Um, I don't know if you want to discuss any further. There's no rush, obviously, because we're bringing the budget over in pieces. And so if you want to continue this item for more discussion at the next meeting, I mean, we can continue it or if you think the items at the bottom or where we want to keep going.
Oh, I, I just have one question, staff. Obviously, these are priority items for this council. So I, I don't think if we're s- scratching something off, that doesn't mean that it's not a, no longer a priority. So I think it would behoove, behoove our community as a whole that, you know, i- if you see a grant opportunity come across for something like, uh, safe routes to schools for the sidewalk improvements. I think we need to keep that as a focus. But obviously, as we've been talking about, there are much bigger issues that we need to deal with. So I don't want to lose sight of any of the, these other ideas. But I think there are more priority items that we've been talking about here. So just because if it doesn't become a goal, doesn't mean that we don't think about it or we just don't consider it because it is a priority, but.
Yeah, and this would be your goal for this budget cycle, yeah, so, or this fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor, I, so do we make a motion on this?
Well, so I was just gonna kind of go through the listing. Um, are there any goals from the first set of goals that were from the twenty-two, twenty-three that we want to continue to prioritize as a part of the council's fiscal goals for twenty-three, twenty-four?
I don't think we've achieved those goals, so.
So there are items on here.
Well, taking off that increased effort for code enforcement. We talked about keeping that.
Remove code enforcement. We did talk about that.
Yeah.
Go ahead and remove that item. Someone pick that one.
Did, did, I know you mentioned fire life safety, so that still addresses our increased effort into addressing fire life and safety, is that correct? It just, we're, we're talking about minor code violations, like somebody left their garbage cans out all week or something. Still, can we put that in there that there's still a priority to fire life safety so that it's, that's documented?
Okay. Because it's not on there as a goal, doesn't mean we don't continue to follow the goals, right? I mean, it's like, we have a code enforcement.
Our standard.
Policy, we do.
Yeah.
Don't really need to increase that anymore. If it is a safety issue, if it's a legal issue, that gets taken care of. And if it's a complaint issue, that gets addressed as well when the complaint, complaint comes in.
Correct.
Yeah.
Complaint, uh, code enforcement complaint-driven, obviously. Um, we don't have a full-time code enforcement officer and so we don't have somebody out there looking for things. Um, so this would be strictly, you know, member of the public and/or staff seeing something and making that determination, that staff level if it's public health and safety, and then having that addressed. And then obviously, um, moving forward with any other complaints received by members of the public.
I would make a recommendation that we strike that goal and add the strategic plan and economic development plan slash roadmap.
Whatever we need to do to say we're exploring various revenue stream options, um, in whatever words we end up using, that's something that we need to do. Um, one of the things we need to do really is free up or make available some of the commercial land, commercial pieces of land. We need to explore those, the ones that are vacant along Highway one-twenty that are either vacant or, um, going unused for commercial purposes. And just be aware that those exist and that that's what we're looking for, is to develop that corridor. And I think it's more, there's not la- I mean, when I was looking for land available for when McDonald's was coming in, there was two commercial pieces of land to pick from, even though we have commercial space. And so just making those available, making those marketed, understanding why people aren't making that land available. And so just making those available, making those marketed, understanding why people aren't making that land available probably, uh, behoove us to know why those aren't available to consumers.
Councilman Engel, would you consider your building permit idea to be included into that various revenue streams?
Build, uh, building permit, uh, business license, building permit?
The, the, for the seventy-five, um, encouraging homes and trying to max out that seventy-five, uh, building permits per year.
Yeah, I'm, I'm accounting for, uh, development fees, connection fees, uh, permit fees, um, a- as well.
Would that roll into the revenue stream, exploring the revenue stream options?
It, it one hundred percent does and ties into a future, uh, property tax and, um, in- increased resident count sales tax.
So that's chew on for tonight, and we can think about these if we need to do any more differences between now and the next meeting.
So do you want me to have this brought back at the next meeting?
Or at the overall budget, when we're finalized with that?
Or I could bring it back at the overall budget.
I think we're close enough to.
It's all gonna be a draft, so everything, when he, when Andy puts everything together.
Yeah.
For the budget, it's all draft and all include this as a part of the budget and all subject to.
Okay.
Edit, edit and, except for numbers, you can't touch numbers.
All right, that moves us on to council communications and future agenda items. We've covered future agenda items as far as the public's concerned, so at this point, uh, council communications, Councilman Struman.
Just queet three quick, uh, four quick things. Uh, just want to, um, remind everybody that on Monday, uh, at nine o'clock, the fire department is doing a nine eleven ceremony, um, so if you could attend, that'd be great. Um, Sergeant, are you guys gonna be in attendance to that as well? So please come out and support our first responders. Chief Flores, get well soon. Um, pass along those messages. Um, I want to publicly thank Ann Shaddix for, for three years of service, uh, as a commission, commissioner on aging. And good luck to Ms. Sandoval. And last but not least, um, I really would like to publicly thank you, Jalen. Um, because I was contact, I've been contacted by a few constituents that you've actually taken the time uh, to meet with them, uh, local businesses, and they said that it was truly a breath of fresh air. And they encouraged, they, they were very encouraged by your involvement and putting yourself out there. So you haven't been here in a lo- uh, for a long time, but we, I can't speak for the other four, but I know you're hitting the ground running and truly appreciate everything that you're doing. That's it.
Have some water.
Sure, thanks for hanging in with us tonight, if you did. Um, thank you to Andy for the presentation, it was fantastic. And yeah, thanks for Jalen putting in the effort as lo- as well as Yvette, she's been a great addition to the team. Um, I'm seeing things come together, and so this conversation, I think, is very helpful moving forward. And then for our communities, this Saturday out, uh, in the Main Street Park is our Lions Club Car Show, which is one of the big events of our year, um, from eight to two, so come on down and participate and buy stuff on Main Street and have a good time and see everybody, so, um, I hope to see you there.
Councilman Engel?
Yes, um, again, I want to say thank you to Yvette for, um, working on the minutes. Um, it was a, a big improvement, thank you. Um, did want to bring something to council to see if there was any interest in this. It was brought to my attention in light of the car show coming up. Um, one of our residents had came to me and talked to us about the, or talked to me about the, uh, Main Street, uh, improvement project that we have coming up with the Meandering Walkway, and they said that they had been in another town and they had been on something similar to what we have proposed. And, um, this person as a senior had a concern about the transition between the concrete and the grass level, saying, um, we may want to look at it because it proposes, or there's, there's a potential tripping hazard for, for our folks and, which leads to a potential lawsuit for the city. Um, so I didn't, I wanted to bring it up, um, see if there was any interest from the council in, in taking a look at that anymore. I, I would be behind that.
So I believe we did meet with that person last week.
Okay.
Um, and we, we've took, taken all of that information, and we're gonna be following up with our engineer to make sure that's addressed. Um, and specifically noted.
Okay.
Um, another item that was brought up along with that was the weight of cars on the sidewalk, um, which has been addressed, um, in the drawings to make sure that the concrete is heavy enough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that, I believe that we, that person did come in last week and put down and reviewed plans and took notes. And so we will be moving forward on those, those comments.
So do we need to bring that as an agenda item, or, or do you?
Sounds like it's under the rug.
I don't mind bringing it up as an update.
Maybe we can get an update, yeah, great.
Bring it back as an update.
That's what I have, thank you.
Councilman or Mayor Protem?
Um, had a couple of things, um, trying to make it quick. Um, one is, um, you know, staff, you're doing a, a great job. I think that, um, you know, we're in, in difficult times, we'll figure it out. I appreciate you guys, uh, working hard and doing your due diligence on things. Um, the, uh, I wanted to see if I could get some support to bring back a resolution uh, to reiterate that we will not be closing for COVID, uh, if this stuff starts to come at us. And that I wouldn't want to be forcing anyone's health decisions other than their own decisions. Um, so if I could, if.
I'll support that.
If I could get that to council to have that conversation, I'd like to, uh, put a resolution out there that, you know, basically our businesses will, uh, know that we're behind them and they're open if they want to be open. Uh, and people are open if they want to be open and do what they want to do.
Yeah, so it looks like you have your second, so we'll go ahead and, and, uh, put something together for that.
Okay, thank you, and, um, let's see here. I thought I had one other thing written down, but apparently it wasn't that important, so. Uh, thank you for staying around tonight.
All right, sentiments, uh, I'm gonna echo as well, thanks for hanging tough, it's getting late, appreciate everybody's efforts. Steph, keep up the hard work, the great work, we appreciate everything you guys are doing. Um, yes, car show, I love car shows, I'm looking forward to that on Sunday. That being said, there's another side part to that, the American Legion is doing their annual breakfast before the car show. I believe they're starting at seven, and I'm not sure how long it goes, it's about ten dollars, I think it is, eggs, pancakes, ham, sausage, the juices and the coffees and all that stuff, they usually do a pretty good job. Good fundraiser for that event, for those folks there, so think about that, and with that, we'll call it a night and we'll see you at the next one. Thanks so much.